...date is January 17th, 2013. I'm Jeff Conwell, Board President. I'd like to introduce my fellow trustees, Sean Marr, Cindy Smith, Jeanne Kerr. Maria Haug made it through one meeting, but she couldn't make it through two. She's got the illness going around and has decided to step back. She will not be here tonight, so it'll be just the four of us. I would also like to introduce our district staff, Mr. Bill McGuire, Mr. Greg Medici, and Ms. Nora O'Neil. We're delighted that you're here in person and/or at home on Channel 7, 27 watching. Oh, Nick, thank you. Nick Cosette, our student representative is here as well. We're on item two, approval of agendas or a motion to approve the agenda?
Approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is carried. Please stand up and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We are on to item number four, which is the public comment on open session items. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak. Please state your name and your address and be concise and brief and limited to three minutes. And this only concerns items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Okay, item number five, presentations. Dr. Julie Sinyard.
Good evening. It is my great pleasure to introduce a number of our jazz choir members and our fabulous new teacher, Ms. Alba Gonzalez-Ardando, and they are going to perform for us this evening. And I will let her tell you what song they're going to sing, but I'd like to introduce our members, Carly Anderson, Ruben Beltran, Julia DiVincenzi, Brian Gonzalez, Kelsey Santiano, and Maria Lise Van Kuren. Please come forward.
My name is Alba Gonzalez-Ardando, the new choir teacher in San Helena High School. Today, we are going to sing a song called "When I Fall in Love" by Kerby Shaw. I hope you like it.
When I fall in love, it will be forever. Or I'll never fall in love. In a restless world like this is, love is ended before it's begun. And too many moonlight kisses seem too cool in the warmth of the sun. When I give my heart, it will be completely. Or I'll never give my heart. And the moments I can feel that you feel that way too. It's when I fall in love. When I fall in love. That's when I fall in love with you.
Wow. Wow. Give him double bends. That's amazing. I know, Nick, you're done tonight. Wonderful job. Nice job. Wonderful job on your solo. Welcome, Julia. Nice to see you again. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful, wonderful day. Very exciting. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Nick, you missed that. You're going to have a hard time. You might not be the big star tonight.
So then it's just going to be even harder for you then.
Oh, boy. We might have to have a break then.
I just wanted to thank the choir very quickly. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. Wow, that was fantastic. We're on to item number six, communication. Tonight, we have a board member report. Trustee Marr attended the RLS.
I did. And it's great, Mary Ann, thank you. I always feel welcome there. This time, what I did was, I thought it'd be fun to just sort of hang out on frosty morning, see what's going on. And so I went in the morning and then went again at lunch. And just because I don't really, my son's there, sixth grade, but I don't know what they do. I know I have to fight him to not wear shorts and he always wins. The girls are a lot smarter because they're wearing their Uggs and their stuff, and the boys are wearing shorts. I don't get it, but what a great campus and just great positive energy. I think everyone feels very safe, comfortable. And I was talking to Elizabeth, who clearly knows every kid by name. Everyone knows everyone by name. So it's comforting to know that these kids are working at a school where they know everyone and you can't pull through the cracks there. And just a lot of positive things happening. Lunch, got to hang out, have some lunch with the kids and walk around. And I didn't realize there's a, it's great. You have to eat and then you have to wait for the activity bell to go off before you go out and play your sports and do your stuff because otherwise you wouldn't eat and you'd be cranky later. Be a problem. But spent some time with Terry O'Leary and it's just a great, positive place. I'm thrilled to have my son there. And another thing I want to mention is I've got, I'm coaching through the rec league, coaching a sixth grade team, and we've got a great team, so I'm going to announce it. It's a black team. It's Riley Baroff, Romero Sundejas, Tyler Dutra, Spencer Fader, Costas, here's my tall guy, Costas, Cal Paris, I used my lottery pick on this little Irish kid, Kellen Maher, Mason Marquez, Clay Sailing, and Adam Weinstein, and his dad, Matt Weinstein's helping me coach. So I'm looking for that. So I'm down there every Wednesday night coaching and then we play games on Saturday.
Great.
And Mary Ann, I have a, you may or may not know, but I have a third grader. So I'll be coming around for the next five and a half years, so sorry. But great job. It's just a wonderful place.
Thank you very much. Sean, it looks like we've had two subcommittees that have reports and all, looks like maybe preschool. Trustee Kerr, could you make a comment about that?
I'll leave that.
Well, yeah, the next one is also, you can do both. How you want to do them. You guys decide.
Oh, I'll jump right in here. We've had two preschool meetings this week, Monday night and Tuesday night. We had a really terrific meeting on Monday night with, pardon me, on Tuesday night, which is our general meeting where the parents were. We had a short agenda. And so we asked every parent to tell us the experience that their children were having in the preschools. And that was really fun to hear how much their children had learned and what they appreciated and the differences amongst the preschools. And it was just unanimous how happy these parents were. And some parents who'd had children who had come to kindergarten without preschool spoke about the difference that they were seeing in their children already. So that was very exciting. We've had about $6,000 more in donations that came in over the holidays, which is great. We're still behind, but we're working on that. We have a new director, Josefina Artado, who's, will be working with the fundraising committee, Cindy and Jeanne, to do that so we can get through this year. And then we're still in close partnership with Napa Learns, which is great. And we need to meet with Pag. Actually, we talked to her about that last night, so that's the preschool update.
Thank you very much. K-5, program evaluation.
I don't, I'm not, where am I? I'm looking to anyone else who's on it at their, oh, there's Tom. I don't, I don't think.
Oh, okay.
It's, yeah, we do. We have a meeting next Tuesday. I don't think we've had a meeting since we last.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have crib sheets up here, so sometimes things get a little astray. Nick, you're up.
My turn, aren't I? All right. So at the elementary school, Erica Rodriguez, Judy Campbell, Cam Fraser, and Mark Arnold attended the Common Core training focused on math standards in Napa last month. Perfect attendance classrooms are recognized daily with principal announcements. Sadly, upon reaching second semester senior year, the elementary school may be winning in that statistic compared to the high school. At the RLS, full-day math training was held last month with a consultant, all three math teachers, and the principal. This was the case for the high school as well. These teachers also trained at Napa County Office of Education in regards to math Common Core. And just as important as classroom instruction for math and science, the sixth graders attended a study trip to the San Jose Tech Museum. Having these tangible applications of math and science can definitely boost the interest. At the high school, many students have already been accepted to colleges and some are even still applying. March is the month that many students are waiting for to receive those letters, and I'll wait until then to list off some of the great colleges that students have already been accepted to. Academic Decathlon North Bay Regional Competition Part One was last Saturday, where speeches, interviews, and essays were all voluntarily taken. Part Two will take place February 2nd. And not that I don't give math already enough attention, but I would like to take this time to recognize how important our math teachers have been to our district during this time. In regards to standardized test scores and their confounding impacts, math teachers have had one of the largest boulders placed on their backs. We have not only asked them to teach one of the least retentive subjects for students, but to do it better to improve scores. There's been an astonishing call of duty that required much effort for these teachers. Although common across all school sites, we have stellar math teachers at the high school. Teachers who could easily be community or state university professors, one of who is a bona fide engineer who could be working for a company like NASA. Having conversation with these individuals, they don't look at teaching as a lesser job that our society has unfortunately somewhat deemed it, but as the most important job of which it is. I can only hope that every math teacher here knows how much he or she is needed and appreciated. And that concludes my report. And unless you have a math spiel, I think you're good, right?
I do have a couple math things coming up. You can definitely tell that he has an outstanding letter of recommendation signed by all of the board members.
Thank you very much.
Already in hand, challenging us going forward. So newfound confidence. That's right. Exactly. Thank you very much.
Fun in life. Thank you, Nick. I appreciate you giving me something to talk about. The first item on the superintendent report is obviously a very serious and sensitive issue, and that's regarding school safety. And so we all know the tragedy at Sandy Hook. There was another school shooting in Taft, California, even after that. And the district's response, what we want to be is, we want to be thoughtful, we want to be careful, we don't want to overreact, we don't want to underreact. And our principals are doing a fantastic job, making sure that we know what's going on. As a small school, we know every student, we know what's going on. Many of the things that we see going on today are mental health issues, and I think we have a really good handle on everything we can. There's many things that we can't handle and we'll be working through that. One of the things that did happen over Christmas break is an unfortunate thing that is in today's society, which is the active shooter scenario by law enforcement. And the high school was used on January 2nd for Napa County to provide, to do, all of Napa County law enforcement to do an active shooter training exercise. And so from Columbine, what they learned, a school in Colorado where a horrible tragedy happened, is that law enforcement can no longer just stand by. They have to go in and find the perpetrator and try and stop whatever's going on. That actually happened. It was well-reported, that it worked extremely well, it was very successful. They made sure that everybody who was up here working understood that they better not go down there, they might get tased. You know, so we stayed away, but the reports were that it was very successful. One of the things that's also very important is the safety of students within the classroom if anything might happen. California schools are very different than other schools, that they're very wide open, they're very open, we have very open canvases everywhere. The actual worst school violence that happened in California was in Stockton, where a person opened fire on kindergarteners, same sort of thing, and first graders from the sidewalk in Stockton, California. So there's all kinds of issues out there. Our goal is that schools are the safest place for children that can be. One of the things we will be looking at is safety hardware on all of our classrooms. Dan Banowitz is leading an effort to bring a report back to the schools. One of the things we can't do is we're not going to just do it tomorrow. We're going to come out with a thoughtful process. One of the things that we will be bringing back to you hopefully this year is a door and window replacement at the elementary school, which we'll be able to focus that on. We also have the modernization at RLS, which we should be able to, be able to add additional funding to make sure that we're sort of up to date with the latest technology. And Dan Banowitz will be working with the schools and bringing back a proposal. Certainly nothing that will be fixed tomorrow within the district, but we really want to have a thoughtful response in what we call our CNO meeting, our Curriculum and Operations meeting. They're going to be going all over their school safety plans, looking at their intruder alerts. We've had a lot of help from Barbara Nemko and the county office over the years. I attended the Mike Thompson gun safety, violence, whatever it was, very entertaining. And it just shows that not a lot is going to happen in the United States in the short term. So we need, as a district, to have a consolidated effort. I want you to know that we have great principals, they have good schools, we're doing everything we can. We will continue to monitor and look at this. We'll be working with the county office. It's a heightened awareness, but it should never just be a heightened awareness because of an event. It should be a heightened awareness because the safety of kids are at hand, and we have to do more. We haven't done enough, especially in the way of hardware on our doors and some other things. And we'll be working on that and bringing you some information back. And after the schools really delve into what they're doing, we'll bring that back as a report. But we're not, many people are having big public forums and a variety of other things. We're not recommending that we do that. We recommend that we get down to work in getting it resolved and making sure that we keep our campuses as safe as possible as going forward. The first week of school after winter break, when I was out in the schools, people were telling me that kids were back, happy, ready to go. I went to other schools that say they're still coming out of the fog, you know, but all in all, people are happy, visited some classrooms, some great instruction going on already. And hopefully that winter break that we had is going to really propel our students forward, especially in math, moving forward. All of you had an opportunity to attend the All County Board of Trustees meeting down in Yountville. It was, I think, was very successful and focused around one central item, which was Napa Learns, infusing technology into schools. And so the board got a lot of good information, I think, about what's going on, but more importantly, a real opportunity to talk to other board members and other districts as they didn't allow us to sit together. You had to sit with other districts and talk about what was going on in their districts. And I think we all learned a lot from it and know a new place going forward. Another thing I wanted to just announce before the next meeting that we have is a special technology staff development that is going to be going on in the district on Friday, February 8th. And this is part of our cooperation with Napa Learns and, in fact, Nevada Unified School District. In Alan November, who is a sort of a renowned technologist, will be in our district all day on Friday, the 8th, and we have an active day of staff development going on. He will also be in Napa doing a dinner series, and 10 of our employees are invited down to that in-service as well. And really, his goal is to infuse technology into instruction. With that, our goal, what the day will be encompassed is, in the very beginning, 8:30 to 9:15, he will work with 20 students selected from our schools from fourth grade to 12th grade and really do an assessment of what are their technology skills, what do they know? He'll then, we'll have a debrief with the administrative team from 9:00 to 10:00, and then we'll move forward into, from 10:00 to 12:00 is a K-5, bringing five teachers and some students from each of the schools and working with him to integrate technology into an existing lesson that they already have. I will have lunch, and then the 612 program will do the same, five from each school. And at that time, there's also students that are involved in that, and the students are there to sort of, no, I'm getting it, I'm not getting it, you know, this is a good thing that you're doing, infusing technology into a lesson there as well. And then at the end of the day, a debrief. And we'll be here till 3:30. He's missing his flight back to Boston to stay a little longer with us because we told him there's no way you can get back to the airport.
It's true.
Time to make that flight. So we get him for, you know, all evening. So we're really looking forward to that as being one of the first things to not, as many people see, layer on technology, which is not what we want to do. We're trying to infuse it into what everybody else is already doing, just to make sure that we're using technology to do what you're already doing in the classroom. And I think Julie is nodding her head that this is very cool, that Alan November is going to spend a little time with us, being that she's a big follower of. And you can see him, and you can see him on YouTube if you'd like, giving a TED Talk.
Wow, that's fantastic. And that really ties in especially well with our meeting we had last night with the All County and Napa Learns and how exciting it is that as a county, we're progressing so far forward. And I was fortunate enough to sit with Chuck McMinn at our table, and we talked a lot about electronic textbooks and where he thinks things are going. And he is with Tom Torleksen on a couple key committees. And I think we're going to see dramatic changes in three to five years where it's really exciting. So all of it's very exciting, and I think we're on the cutting edge, and I'm happy we're there. Item number seven, consent agenda. Is there anyone present who wishes to publicly comment on any item contained within the consent agenda? Trustees, any questions about any item contained within consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Motion is carried. Item number eight, this is board-related items. This is approval of the 2012-2013 Strategic Plan for the San Helena Unified School District. This is an action item. Is there anyone who wishes to publicly comment on this item? Trustees, anybody wish to comment?
I just want to say that I took a couple of hours today to go through this and read in things, and it's very comprehensive and very easy to read and very understandable and something that someone can really grasp easily, and I really appreciate that. I think it's wonderful. Thank you, Nora, for putting this together, and I believe that Glenn as well. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And the steering committee that helped guide all this, I had a chance a couple days ago to review the document also in depth. And the thing that's really exciting to me is how last meeting or the meeting before, when we've kind of changed our site councils to act kind of as our strategic plan in the field at that level. And I think it's just, I think it's really exciting what we're doing and that we're following it and we're challenging ourselves to keep producing better and better students. Anything?
Yeah, my comment, and I apologize, I commented on this last time. Yeah, again, terrific, really easy to read, a lot of work I know has gone in from last month when we saw that before. So I really appreciate that. On the comparative analyses, which begin on page 49, the only suggestion for the future would be that we just indicate how those are sorted and perhaps why they've been sorted because I kind of looked at them and I couldn't quite figure it out, well, we're ranked seventh, but what are we ranked seventh for? And then when I spent enough time, I figured it out. But we could put a little parentheses, sorted by whatever we're sorted by. But yeah, thank you, everybody, for working so hard on this.
Outstanding. Any other comments, questions?
Alan, I want to thank the steering committee as well. I know that trustee Marr is on this, so thank you for your time and all the time of their community members, or Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, and huge load on the staff here, upstairs here.
And of course, all of our principals who actually put all the data in it. We might have typed it up, but they put it in it. Also notice that they don't like each other very much. It's kind of like the four corners here.
Like, you don't like, want to sit together or even like even close? Tom, are you sick or?
Everybody's got an exit strategy.
Everybody's got an exit strategy.
Is there a motion to approve the 2012-13 Strategic Plan for San Helena Unified School District?
I'm happy to approve the 2012-2013 Strategic Plan for the San Helena Unified School District.
Second here with pleasure.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is carried. Onto item 8B, leadership update on board self-evaluation. This is information only. We have conducted our second of four quarterly evaluations for this school year. We are going to talk about it in depth tomorrow at the workshop, but I will say that when I have gone to training at the School Boards Association, people are astounded that we, as a board, are challenging ourselves to critique how we're doing every quarter, which is rarely done in districts, let alone some of them, the best they can do is once a year, if that. So it's really kind of exciting as a way for our growth model. So I'll be talking about that more. Is there anybody who wishes to publicly comment on that item? Trustees, any questions? We are on to item 8C, policy and judicial review. This is Board Policy 1330, facilities use, information only. Mr. Greg Medici.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're bringing back the conversation, continuing the conversation from December, so we wanted to bring the board information generally on facility use fees and what the board's recommendation may be in terms of a conversation going forward on what the board would like to see for fees.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to publicly comment on this agenda item? Trustees, questions, comments?
Well, thank you. It's been nice to have this multiple times because there's a lot of information. And I don't, with respect to the fee schedule, I personally don't have any issues with it. I mentioned last meeting, I'll reiterate, I just want to make sure, the implication and the application of it is important to me, and I want to make sure that we're very clear about which groups are able to use our facilities without a fee or with nominal fee or just the weekend fee. I know that the rec department, and Heidi's not here, but I noticed the rec department is a current category 11, but with a reduced, a different rate for the city. And I'm assuming that the rec department's been involved in that and that works for them, but is that correct?
Well, our goal is, and our discussions is, that we will have a separate contract relative to the fee structure with the city. Much like many of the other contracts that we have with the city relative to this building and some other things. That would be, need to be finalized after the rate structure is put in place. I guess I'd like to weigh in that I'm happy with the rates. I would... I would like to see, I would like us to categor, simplify both category 11 and, I guess, 111 or 2 and 3, depending on how you read them in the instruction. And I would really like to see category 11 that is something that pertains to youth programs. So specifically, if you're a youth program, doesn't matter whether you go to our school or you go to another school, that, and I would like to see a dramatically reduced rate from what they're saying. And I'm somewhere between 90 and 100% below what the rate is. I question whether we need a nominal fee. I still think we kind of do, but I'm, I think that I would like to see, we really want the youth in our town to be using our facilities, and we are St. Helena, and we don't have any other facilities. So it's really important that we make sure that it's shared, and that, once again, the burden is on the parents who, if we raise the fees to a soccer group, or a softball group, or something, all we're doing is turning around and raising our own parents for the things. And I think we should really think about discounting those. As far as the categorizing, I would change, I would simplify the category 111 or 3. And I think that a, somewhere in the neighborhood of a 50% discount off of what the established rate is for adult groups would be, you know, something like that. And I don't, you know, and once again, I think a contract, I think that's great with the city to make sure it's a package deal, and it's something that they can budget and plan for, is very important. But I would love to see, when I read this, and I, that's not even really an AR, it's just basically the application, and it goes into great depth. And I understand category 1, that that's basically Civic Center Act, and there's, that stands as it is, where it's free. But I think that we need, we need to simplify the other things and just get it so it's a very, you know where you're going to fall under. And the other issue for me is, I really want it to be that there are no sweetheart deals. So if we're, if we actually are renting the high school football field, that any team who chooses to rent that field can use, can rent that field. It's not a special field that only certain people have the key and access to. And that's kind of, so, that's kind of where I am about all those things. And the last, the last item that I've kind of thrown out there before is, I still would love to somehow have a link on the website that would have, for example, the, you know, RLS gym, let's take that, it's easy right now, and you would have, of course, all the RLS sports that have filled out their hours, then the city has come through and filled out their basketball schedule, and then if that would allow people to use and to be able to use the facilities more. And I would prefer it was, if it was, as much as I hate to say it, an add-on duty at the district level rather than a site level. I would prefer if it was one person that was controlling all of those things, at least was putting all that information in, and it might be easy, that way the rules would stay the same across the board, I guess.
So what you're saying is maybe just one person managing the whole, all of the placements and things?
That's what I see, just to keep the differences, you know, obviously, the school sites would have first priority, as it clearly states in our policy, but then, that is, if you want to use whatever the field is, then you would go to that one person at the district. And if the software, you would be able to see that it was available, and it might facilitate more use from the community.
Yeah, I agree. So how is it done now then, as far as reserving space? Like, say, the, I know that the RLS gym is used a lot. How is that done? I'm asking you, Gregg, I'm sorry. Is that done then through the site then? Is Mary coordinating all that?
Correct. There's a paper process, and the site leadership signs off on the use before it makes it to the district office for final signature.
Is there software applications that do that, for, you know, like what Jeff is saying, where they can just, you can go on there and see if that is available, and rent it that way?
There are software applications where we are currently not employing software to do that.
Right, okay.
Current product that we have, School Dude, has a module which will allow us to do that. And they are implementing it in Calistoga. We are not implementing it until we finalize the policy.
Right.
Right.
So we've got to finalize the policy, know what we're charging, and agree what we're charging.
Right.
And I don't want to take away from the principal authority. I just, I would love to have it so it was one person, and I don't.
Yeah, no matter what, in my opinion, it's only my opinion.
Yeah, please.
It has to go to the principal for approval, because the principal knows what's going on at the school on a daily basis.
Right, yeah.
Even in the small district, if you had one person, I would never recommend that they approve it without a conversation with the principal, who knows what's going on at their site.
Yeah.
You know, and just, and that gets it down into the system. Software system makes it easier, because you can just email them, and it pops up, here's the deal. But it is part of their responsibility to sign off on that, as the supervisor of the campus.
Yeah. You know, I'd like to say, I think it's our job to look at these fees and, you know, comment on them, but it's not our job to tell them how to implement it. You know, this just makes for long meetings, and I don't understand.
That's fair.
You know, why we, you know, we, they come with recommendations that we send it back, they implement it. We don't tell them how to implement it.
Right. Any other comments?
You know, and I agree with you in the sense of, I want to, I want it for all of the students of St. Helena, and not just our district, as far as moving forward and things. And I just want to be very, I don't want, I want to be, I don't want, I don't want the category 3 users to be discouraged about the price. I don't want the price to be so high that it discourages people to use our facilities, because we want, we are saying as a board that we want our community to use the facilities. And that's, that's just my thoughts.
So we will continue to gather all of these thoughts, and bring it forward with a final recommendation, and hopefully we'll meet the direction of the board, and then be fully implemented within the district. Probably not next month.
Right. Wow. No, item number nine. No wonder this meeting is flying by. Okay, item number 10, student learning and achievement. The district of choice 2013 enrollment and lottery, this is an action item. Mr. Maguire, or Mr. Medici?
Oh, here we go. We do not, we do not have a spinning machine anymore, little tiny balls that Bill Maguire cannot read. Gregg and Nora have come up with a beautiful box here that we will hold up. The good news is, we don't have, need 30 balls. The maximum that we need is, is four. This item is to approve the enrollment caps and do a lottery for the waiting period. You have information in front of you, I do believe, about what we need to do. Do they have that, Nora? That sheet of paper that we were going to give them?
I think we do. Do you have this?
Um, no.
No.
Okay, well, we'll just wing it. So for the, within the information, you can see that we had, we had 19 individuals that have submitted applications during the application period. We are suggesting that the enrollment cap was on page 48, for 2013-14, be 1,260 students. And you can see the district of choice applications and the number of students that need to be placed in the waiting area. When you look at that, we have no students who requested 12th grade. We have one student who requested 11th grade, and they will be placed on the waiting list with, as number one. We have a 10th grader who is currently already enrolled, but moved out of the district, filed in, and is on our, was waiting for the next grading period, and is on our, and submitted a district of choice application. It is our recommendation that that student have waiting list number one, and be accepted, because they're already in the enrollment number. So they moved out during the first semester, first trimester, second trimester. They've granted inter-district until the next grading period. There are no 9th graders requesting. For 8th grade, we have two students, student A and B, they both have a sibling, one in 10th and one in 8th grade. So we need to do a lottery, and we're going to put two balls in here, one and two. We'll pull them out, and we'll mark them for 8th grade. We've got to hold it up. There we go. See how easy this is? So this is student B, and they are number two. Easily done, there's only two. Student A is number one. Got that. Okay. All right, we're in 7th grade, there are four students, none of them have siblings. Okay, so we, and this is for student A, they are number four. This is for student B, and they are number one. This is for student C, and they are number three. And if we have the right numbers in there, math skills, it's a number two.
How'd we do, Nick?
How'd we do? For 6th grade, we have three students. Student A has a sibling in the district, they are automatically number one. For the next two students, B and C, we need to pick, so this is, you're going to lose ball. B is number two, therefore C is number three. At St. Helena Elementary School, we have one student who is in the 5th grade, who is currently on the same situation, on an inter-district, because they moved during the course of the year, they've allowed to stay, they're currently enrolled, and we would recommend that you accept them for next year, because they're currently in the enrollment count. We have no students in 4th grade, we have one student in 3rd grade, and they would be number one on the waiting list. At St. Helena Primary School for 2nd grade, we have two students, they do not have siblings, so student A will be number one, and student B will be number two. And for kindergarten, we have three students. This one is a little different, because we actually don't know how many kids we have enrolled yet. So student A is number two. Student B is number three, and therefore student K, student C will be number three.
Number one.
One, sorry. Number one, one. Looking at too many, 1, 2, 3, K-3. Okay. So that gives us the lottery numbers, it gives us the cap. We're in compliance with our policy. We would recommend that you approve the caps and establish the waiting list. We will then communicate to each one of the parents what their waiting list number is, and then communicate them with, and again, in May, when we have a better handle on the number of students that we might have in the district, and then during the first week of school.
Okay, and we're going to include those with that recommendation. Those two students would be automatically enrolled.
There's actually three students. There's a 10th grader, there's a 5th grader, and there is a 1st grader.
A 1st grader that would all be?
That are already currently, sorry, and I skipped over the 1st grader. Currently in the numbers that we currently have, and have a district of choice on file.
Okay. Is there anyone present who wishes to publicly comment on this agenda item? Trustees, is there a motion to approve the 2013-14 enrollment cap and lottery drawing with the waitlist described for possible class openings by Superintendent Maguire?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Motion is carried. We are on to item number 10B, which is a report to the board on the St. Helena High School. This is information only. Dr. Julie Senior.
Thank you. And I am going to give you a brief overview of everything that's going on at the high school this year, and a little bit of a preview for next year as well. So currently, with the new semester, second semester, we have approximately exactly 514 students. We've had six new students since the semester has begun, so it's been wonderful to meet some new friends. We are currently a comprehensive high school that offers college prep classes, our AP classes, and some honors classes. We have classes for English language learners, our special education students. We have a wonderful career technical education program, we have elective courses, and we have courses for credit recovery in case a student hasn't met standard and needs to earn credits, they can take some independent study courses with us. Our extracurricular offerings include academic decathlon that Nick has spoken about, and February 2nd, please come to Rodriguez High School where they're competing. They'd love to see you there. Sports, we have a wonderful sports program, and we thank everybody for always coming to support our students in their sporting activities. A wonderful Future Farmers of America program. Again, everybody appreciates the support that the community and the board has shown our students. We have a number of club activities, drama productions, our choir that you saw tonight, which is just wonderful, and I want to compliment Alba again for being here. And stepping into some big shoes, she had some big shoes to fill with Mr. Bond's absence, and has been doing a wonderful job. Our leadership teacher, Ms. Arvisu, who you've seen through all our homecoming activities, is incredible, and a great ASB group, and with a number of community service opportunities for our students. I think one of the things, I've been kind of trying to reflect right now, we're currently working on our WASC report, which is basically kind of what's going on the last six years. And Mr. Cento and I, the teachers, have really been talking about, you know, our school climate and culture and curriculum. One of the things that I think that I'm most proud of, that I know I'm most proud of, is our school climate and culture, and the students that we produce. When our kids walk across that stage, there's no other feeling. I honestly cannot say enough on how proud I am of our teachers and our students for how hard they work. And as Nick said, you know, how excited, he's going to, next couple meetings tell where our students have been accepted. I invite you all to come into the office right now, because our penance are hanging up, and to see where everybody's been, just some of our first students, where they're getting into, it's just incredible. And there's lots of, there's lots of good vibes at the high school right now. So again, the school climate and culture, it's a huge group effort. Our students hold each other accountable, our teachers hold each other accountable, and I just think it's a wonderful place to come to school. In terms of our club and sport participation this year, our fall sports have done wonderfully, our winter sports are doing great, and I'm looking forward to track and softball and baseball, and swimming, of course, I can't forget swimming. But currently, we had 30 students involved in cross-country, and 12 in volleyball, and JV and 12 in varsity, and JV football had 53 students, which is the highest number since I have been here. Varsity football had 31, we had a few more buses that we needed. JV boys soccer had 16, our varsity boys soccer had 11, JV girls soccer 16, varsity girls soccer 20, and cheerleading had 19. And our winter sports are doing great as well, and so that's where some of our students, our girls, are at Kelseyville tonight. 43% of our student population is currently involved in extracurricular activities. Clubs that we have right now, our academic decathlon has 21, our ASB with Ms. Arvisu has 24 students, our CSF group has 74, our drama advocacy group has 10 students, our environmental club, I don't have an exact number, it keeps fluctuating, so depending on the field trip, the numbers grow quite a bit. It's true. French club has 25, our French honor society has 10. And again, some of these are like the CSF and the French honor society, and the National Honor Society are kind of awards, you have to have a certain GPA to get into these clubs. The Future Farmers of America has 291 students, our Gay-Straight Alliance has 10. Again, this is Mr. Cento's group, the Hacky Sack Society also varies, he had an infinity sign on there, but Nora corrected us, I should stop joking around. Interact, just kidding, Nora. Interact has approximately 30, and that number fluctuates too as well, that's another huge club for us. We have a new club this year, Latinos Unidos, and Mr. Ren is sponsoring that club, and that's been great, that club's building as well, there's more than 10 now, too. Our mathletes group does vary as well. Our National Honor Society currently has 18. Our science club has 15, and our stars club has 12. So again, we're having duplicates, but about 550 students are involved, and we want our kids hooked to something at school. Some of our recent developments in the last year, this year we changed our two-day block schedule from last year, it was Tuesday, Wednesday, this year it's Wednesday, Thursday, to accommodate our sports teams. That's helped, because a lot of kids were leaving and missing two block days, and that wasn't so good. So we've changed that, and that's helped our students. I cannot say enough about access period right now. I attribute, some of our numbers are trending upward, and I attribute a great deal of that to access, where teachers require students to come into class during this period and get extra help, and I think that's really helped bolster our programs. Our ASB-led program, Team Connect, continues to grow and expand, and I think, talking to the initial leaders, Sarah Gamble and Nick Cosette, kind of getting a lot of feedback, how our last couple activities are gone, and just saying it's going better and better. So that's great news. So that's great news. We had an activity last week, and the kids got to hear a panel of seniors talk about their college acceptance and the fun road to get to college, and they got to watch a team video, and they played scavenger hunt, did some team-building activities, so it was great. We're trying, one of the things that we want to make sure that we're doing, too, when kids are applying to college, there's a big honors and awards section. And what we noticed is unless kids were in sports, or CSF or National Honor Society, there wasn't a lot of opportunity for recognition. So the teachers came up with some great ideas, and we recognize a student of the month, and we recognize students of the quarter, and different characteristics, responsibility, cooperation, and teachers nominate students, so that's been fun. And you'll see, and I hope you've seen all the paper, the pictures in the newspaper. They've been recognized. Thank you, Jesse, for putting those in. The honor roll, last year we had 56 students with 3.0 and above, which is great, and keep going. Excuse me, our honor roll program goes to high honors, 3.86 and above, honors 3.5 to 3.85, and honor roll mention 3.0 to 3.49. And goal is to get everybody on those honor rolls, working on that. We have a very strong AVID program with a 95% college acceptance rate, and Mr. Conlin and Ms. Rios do a tremendous job helping our students. We've had some community service changes from requirement to voluntary, which have been explained previously, but the thought behind that was because we're requiring students to have 50 hours, colleges were kind of saying, well, that's not really above and beyond what you're doing. So we've made it voluntary. We still require students to do community service through their senior project, and we've talked to students about doing a common trend or a common theme in all their community service. So it's wonderful to do a couple hours here, but if you can show that you're passionate about a certain strand, you know, you love animals, you're going to spend all your time working at the veterinary clinic or something along those lines, try and make it more thematic. So students have worked on that. And we've been, we've been very fortunate to have the Measure B and C building construction, so we are definitely enjoying our new facilities. And there they are. And I know you guys have seen these thousands of times, so. Let's see. One of the big changes, obviously, that we've had was kind of moving away from the IB program to the Advanced Placement Program, and it's been pretty much a seamless transition in that respect. So students are doing well. They are challenged, the curriculum is still rigorous, and critical thinking is in every single subject that we are teaching. So that's been a good change, and we're actually looking next year, too, to hopefully offer an AP Psychology class as well. This couple of the new classes that we did offer this year was philosophy. We added a second year of American Sign Language. We have a creative writing course, an acoustic guitar class, environmental horticulture, and an ELL support class. So students in our English language learner programs have an additional class for extra help, especially focusing on passing the CASSY. One of the things that we're doing to make sure students are college and career ready, every student has a four-year college plan, kind of works with their counselor to set up a four-year academic plan, what classes you need if you want to be competitive, and how to also fill all their graduation requirements. And these are just a couple of things, which you heard me at another earlier board meeting, kind of talk about all the things that counselors were doing with the ideas inventory and the career projects they have to do in their freshman essentials classes, the California Career Zone, where students take kind of applications and say, you might be interested in this career. Students doing, studying for the PSAT, the plan, the college board search. In grade 11, we do a lot of the major minor finder, again, heavy focus on the PSAT. There's actually an 11th grade meeting going on this evening for kind of going over the PSAT results. And in grade 12, there is a huge push on filling your college application, correct, Nick? Do students ever leave Ms. Minneke's office? Ms. Minneke is quite busy getting all our kids into college. She does a tremendous job with that. I'm not going to kill everybody with a ton of data, oh, at all, apparently, so, oh, yeah. I swear I didn't touch anything.
Thank you, Glenn.
So good, excellent, my wonderful. So it's a little bit challenging to see, and I tried to highlight, the red numbers are the St. Helena High School scores, and the white scores are the state means. In every area except for one in 2011, in our mathematics group, we are above the state average, and continuing to trend upward again. We took a dip in mathematics in 2011, but we went from 51, 54 students taking the test to 75. So again, we are trying to encourage more students to take the ACT and SAT to obviously increase chances in getting accepted into college. Oops, okay, here we go. One more big data slide. This was our API scores from last year, the 2012 year and beyond, five years before, and there's an upward trend, with the exception, we went down a little bit with our English language learners and our students with disabilities. So that's been a big focus this year. Again, how do we make sure we're helping all of our student populations? But I am very proud of our staff because it's been nine years since I've been here, and it's the first time we've broken the 800 barrier for us, so we are very proud of that, and hope to do even better this year before the tests all go away. We start the Common Core. Again, I think one of the things that we do so well here is in terms of not only academics but administering to the whole child, is the support services that we have at the school. We have two academic counselors. We have Team Connect to help with the transition for 9th graders. Our AVID, our student support services, we have Debbie Bauer, who's a tremendous help to students in crisis. We have a library and media specialist who is incredible with research and documentation skills, and Susan Swan is just incredible. We have a Loona Falvey with our wellness clinic, continues to see students and help our athletes and all students. We have wonderful transition services for our students with disabilities, and I compliment Nick Joy and Marie Whites and Lisa Marie Haff. This year we were awarded the Calstat recognition for being a leadership site for, anybody in California is going to come and kind of visit our transition program, and we'll give you more details about that coming up. Again, academic counseling is incredible. We are lucky that we have marriage and family support counselors as well, and we are very lucky to have paraprofessional support in our special education programs. Technology, again, a big area. We're looking forward to Alan November coming to visit with us, but we have continued to try and infuse technology into our curriculum, partnering with Napa Learns, making sure there's LCDs and LMOs in every classroom, wireless and internet access. Our updated freshman essentials and humanities class, we have a cart with our laptops on there, and that's incredible. It's been wonderful. We have multiple internet database subscriptions, so TurnItIn.com, Questia, great resources for students to start learning their research skills. We have graphing calculators in our math courses. We have a number of updated computer labs in our library, and the Ag Woodshop area is incredible computer lab, and we've got the Classroom of the Future model going into our classes. Okay. This is, this one's a little small, sorry, guys. We have a number of student staff accolades, and I have to get my thing because I can't read it. Sorry. We've got a 99% graduation rate, which obviously we're very thrilled about, and a 95% post-secondary school attendance. So our students are either going to four-years or two-year colleges, and that's a huge push that we're going to continue. This year we recognized Stephanie Lopez for being acknowledged by the National Hispanic Merit Scholarship Recognition Program. The year previously, we had two National Merit Scholar recipients. We've had the second highest-scoring academic decathlon team in the small school rankings in the state of California, and hopefully we'll continue to do that and get maybe number one this year. Last year, three with the kind of the phasing out of the International Baccalaureate Program, but last year we had three students going for their diploma, and all three students met that and received their diplomas. Last year, 57 students completed International Baccalaureate certificates and received those with their exams. We had two Northern California chapter of the National Football Foundation and Hall of Fame Scholar athletes. We've had seven thespian scholars and three international thespians, and we've had the state champion vine judging team and the vine pruning team, and FFA State Superior Chapter. So that's great, but again, we continue moving forward, so hopefully next year I'll be back here with a whole bunch more accolades for our students. And again, for the staff accolades, we have a number of FFA and Ag recognitions, but also wanted to point out that we had the California Athletic Director of the Year, Mr. Tom Hoppy, and California American History Teacher of the Year, Dr. Motzy. So very proud of the school and our teachers. And another one that you can't really see, and I'm sorry, folks, but I do this presentation again, we're going to have to make this bigger. But this is where our students last year were accepted to colleges, and we had a couple go into the Marines and into the Army. And again, like I said, I please encourage everybody to come into our office and see where everybody is getting accepted to currently. And Mr. Cento, again, has been very busy hanging penance. And that is it for the high school for the 2012-13 school year.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody who has any public comment on this agenda item? Trustees, any comments, questions?
Okay, thank you.
I do have...
Yeah, thank you for the time. It's really terrific to have it.
Thank you, and I do have one question. I was sitting with Chuck McMinn last night, and we were talking about, is there an opportunity, so say a student wants to take Greek, for example, do we have a way to do online, like an independent study program where you can submit something and then get to a computer or anything like that?
We've done that in the past. So in a few years ago, too, haven't done it currently because I've had students, guess I need to take Greek or Mandarin yet. But in the past, we've had students who wanted to take AP Psychology, and so they did it on their own. So again, if the student interest is there, we definitely find a way. There's a number of online classes. Sometimes students pay for them independently. We do a couple courses through BYU, and again, we're kind of looking into Apex Learning as well right now, so there's definitely opportunities for that.
Yeah, because I also was sitting with the Superintendent of Napa Valley College, who was very excited about trying to open up their online site because it helped them and their numbers if there's, you know, students that want to take those kind of courses.
The biggest push is usually in the AP. So if there's somebody who already knows they want the AP language that we're not offering, we have a couple students who study on their own and do that, too. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Item 10C, which is an update on the district's suspension and expulsion rates and district policy. This is information only. Mr. Bill McGuire.
Well, if you notice, the chair next to Greg's empty. Cindy is having a nice dinner somewhere.
Oh, good.
In Monterey, and we are going to do her presentation, so I'll have the administrative team move up to the front in case I screw anything up here, and we have any questions moving forward. We do have a couple reports on student learning and achievement. One of the things that we've talked about previously is suspension and expulsions, intervention, and what the district's policy is within that. We also provided to you are the district policy and administrative regulation as well as a late, an adjustment, addition to the agenda item, so I want to apologize for that, but that is there. Suspension and expulsions are becoming a hot topic within the state of California and nationally, and the governor has recently signed legislation that really limits the ability of school districts to exclude students for disruptive behavior. And nationally and statewide, there's been many, many studies that the use of that has been detrimental, especially to minority students, students of color and a variety of things. So there's a lot of information related to that in today's environment, and we'll be bringing back new board policies for you because they go into effect as of January 1st. So it's going to be our job to bring those back to you with the next CSBA updates. With that, we also have provided for you the demographic information and the numbers over the course of the years for the district, for the high school, for Robert Louis Stevenson Middle School, the elementary, and the primary. And obviously, if you look at what's going on in the district, it fluctuates from year to year based upon the students and the number of suspensions. That is true for the schools as well. If you remember our quality school snapshots that we provided, that also has demographic information for each school and how they compare to both the district and the state level related to suspension and expulsions as well, and we would hope that you would check that out. And then at the very bottom, we have the information related to the overall data from 1213, in which, you know, we have had two expulsions, and that is up to date as today, as well as 44 suspensions going forward. We also provide a number of items in which students have been suspended or expelled for. Many of those items are mandatory by law, where we don't have a choice. Other ones are meeting the board policy related to behavior of the students. One thing that is very important is based upon the size of our schools, based upon the number of people and the adults that we have, as we just heard, we're very connected to those students. And the interventions, many of the interventions at the high school that Julie talked about, you know, are all already in place. We've, this year, implemented the school, last year, the School Attendance Review Board, Team Connect, the Safe School Ambassadors Program has been at the RLS with Webb, but we've also now moved it into the elementary school. The BEST program being really challenged out through the primary and the elementary, and then our K-9 contraband detection dogs have been on campus, and just, I think it was, Mary, correct me, it was this week that they were at our schools as well. So we're trying to do everything we can to be proactive in this realm. It is a relationship between the adults and the school, and it all brings forward. With that, you have our policy, and that I would suggest that you look through and see if there's any, it is your policy. It is, this is your school district, and we operate it based on how you would like to have it done. There will be changes coming from the state. I also think that while in some cases, some of our numbers have maybe been higher in some areas, up and down, I think that overall, I think that our staff will comment that we have a wonderful student body, and that we use the means and devices that we have to the best interest of the students. Sometimes it's heartbreaking, but we do the best that we can for the students, and I know that each one of the adults on our campus makes student-centered decisions every time. Sometimes they're tough-love decisions that have to be made, and they are gut-wrenching for our administrative staff, but they have to be made in relationship to that. We also have asked for the expulsions. We specifically, working with the high school, because when we expel a student through an expulsionary process, there's an administrative panel who reviews the recommendation of the administration, that does, then comes to the board. Typically, an expulsion is for a one-year timeframe, but the students return to St. Helena. Almost always, the students return to St. Helena and re-enroll and have a successful career, finishing out their career in St. Helena. One of the things that, they track every student, we've now asked them to do a little more tracking and give us a better estimate of what was their academic achievement, what was their attendance before, and what is it after, so that we can do a better job of checking. But I do believe that everyone here is committed to do the best that we can for the students, and suspension and expulsion is our part of school life. We just need, got to figure out how to make sure that we're doing it for the benefit of the children, and it's helping their academics going forward. So our team can answer any questions that you might have. I like that none of them are moved when I ask them to come up to the front, but I'm sure they'll answer any question that you might have.
Well, before I get to the board, is there anybody who wishes to publicly comment on this agenda item? Trustees, comments?
Well, I have a comment. I sat through at the CSBA conference, and I apologize, I meant to look for it today before I got here, but I forgot. But two presentations on suspension and expulsions, and in particular, one that was really amazing, this gal, she's a pretty amazing person. She has a ton of education and is working with UCLA and has done a study where they've been looking at suspension and expulsions and analyzing, and Bill already intimated it, the disparate impact it's having on minority students. And when you look at, I'm just doing this off the top of my head, but, you know, African-American boys with disabilities, the suspension or expulsion rate statewide is, I mean, it was well over 50%. It was pretty dramatic when you looked at that. So she looked at the statistics, and then the other thing, her report analyzed was, okay, if we all can agree that suspensions and expulsions are designed to take the child out and help that child and have that child understand how serious what he or she did was, so he can come back and be successful, and at the same time, protect the remaining students in the school. So if that's the purpose behind it, they went and did studies and found actually that suspension and expulsions were often having the opposite effect. The student who was being suspended or expelled was doing worse in school, and there was no benefit to the rest of the students by taking the child out. So at least for me personally, it got me very interested in this topic, and it's interesting that the governor's passed a law to modify it. So I know it's something, I don't really have a question, I'm just... So, I know it's something, I don't really have a question, I'm just making a little speech here, but it is something that I am, I'm very interested in seeing and understanding the impact on all of our students and really making sure, I mean, in an ideal world, we would have, we would avoid having to suspend or expel anyone in the first place. I think that that's, we, I would hope that we would all say that that would be our goal, that we would never get to that point. And there's a middle school over in Marin where the people came and talked at, spoke at this CSBA seminar and talked about how they made, what they did and the kind of changes they made, and they have peer review. If you do X, you go to your peer court, and they said the peer court is harder on the kids than anybody else, and all these different ways, and how the suspension and expulsion rates have really gone down. So it's something I'd really like to see us continue to look at over the next year, two months, so.
Sure. Why don't we let Jeannie finish?
You know, as I, also am very interested in suspension expulsion, because I think that the very hardest part of being a board member for me is expelling a student, just because I, I feel like I'm not, I've told the other trustees this, where I just feel like I'm making this vote and I'm changing this child's life, I'm changing their life, and I really feel that way, and it's really difficult for me to do that. But besides that, I was at the, when we were at the dinner last night, the all-board dinner last night, I was sitting with a gentleman from the Napa Valley Unified, and they were talking about the programs that they use, and they've seen the expulsion rate decrease dramatically in the last couple of years, so I would like to learn more about what they're using in that Napa Valley Unified and maybe some other districts as far as, you know, alternatives to expulsions and suspensions, when they're not, when expulsions are not a mandatory expulsion. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
I guess I just would like to come up and just talk to the board in reference to suspension and expulsions, that I can assure you from the other administrators here and myself, and from my personal background as a clinical social worker, by the time I get to a suspension, me personally, I can't speak for them, but I know them well enough, I think, it is at a point where it's progressive. I have talked, we've had parent conferences, we've had parent contact, we have gone the gamut, we've had in-school lunched attention, we've had an after-school, we've had work detail. There's many, many variables and consequences that have led up to that. And then it gets to a point that, okay, this is serious, there needs to be an impact beyond what I can do any further here at the school site. So I know it's the last option I want to do, because I don't want that kid out of the classroom either, because I know it puts them back. I want them in the classroom getting the instruction. So it's gut-wrenching for us to do that, but it's also a learning lesson for students when I get to that point, and I do see it changing behavior when I get to the point of suspension. Expulsion, I never like. I hate expulsions. But we have to think of the bigger picture of what message are we sending out there for all the other students if we have this particular event that happens? So if a student, if we're able to have alternatives, I'm up for looking for alternatives. I'm not saying my way is the right way, I've been doing this 20 years. It seems to be working, but if I had a Saturday school for kids that were continually getting in trouble, if we had some other alternatives, peer court, I'd be more than happy to try some other alternatives. But I know, and please know, it's our last option. It's not where we go to right off the bat with a kid. All right, thank you.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Just following up on that, I, I mean, I appreciate that, Mary, and I feel that our job is to support all four of the administrators sitting here and work with you and help you, and, you know, you are the experts, of course, but we may be the gatekeepers of the resources. So if there are things that we can do together that we're not doing now to help, I think we would all agree that that would be terrific, you know, for everybody, if we're able to reduce or avoid having to get to the point of suspension, is a better way to put it.
This has been a topic of discussion, and we are looking at, you know, developing alternatives for students in middle and high school that exhibit disruptive behavior. You know, there is, even having our wonderful art kids, there is disruptive behavior that we have to address. So we'll be working, especially moving forward in the next academic year, to come up with alternatives that are going to help us make all students successful in any way that we can.
And just one last. So, once we get the governor's policy, we'll be bringing this back at that point, and we'll be doing the same thing, you know, we will info, so it'll be an info, and then the following meeting would be an action to accept the block of things, so, and we could talk about how we're doing that. Okay. Item 10D, which is an update on the progress of the implementation of Common Core.
And Greg's helping me out by having us just sit over here and take care of it quickly, you know, and with any presentation, we're not going to read the presentation to you, we're just going to talk about it real quickly. The information is provided to you, we want you to look at it, certainly call the schools, your school that you're, that you're the site visitor to, certainly find out what they're doing moving forward. But the Common Core is becoming a bigger and bigger issue as we move forward for everyone in California, and you've seen this before, this is the timeline, and what many people are very concerned about is the administration, that thing out in 2015, is the administration of the first summative assessment. So, in today's world, whether we like it or not, there is high-stakes testing in relationship to that, and that's really where the focus is, is we implement the Common Core, what will be the impact related to that? There has been just a very recent change related to STAR, where State Superintendent Tom Torson has recommended that STAR assessments not be required for federal accountability and be suspended in next school year so that we can be focusing on Common Core rather than STAR, because they are not currently aligned. However, he does not have the authority to do that. And given that the federal government has declined, recently declined our request for a waiver, who knows what's going to happen, but these would be all of the levels that are very hard to see, that would be suspended as that information goes forward. The real key that we need to look at is that how is the Common Core going to change curriculum? And you can see in mathematics and you can see in English Language Arts, the real differences. In mathematics, just looking that there is a greater focus, and that in, number four, there's an emphasis on practices, which is very important. Just in English Language, there's a focus on evidence and the literacy in the content areas, listening and speaking. Those are big things that change the way in which we deliver instruction. And within that, the Common Core classrooms that we will be working to implement within this district are going to have a greater infusion in technology, and thank goodness we have Measure C, and thank goodness we have Allen November, and some of the things that we're able to afford to be able to bring to us. There's much more productive group work, noisier classrooms, projects-based learning, and a greater focus on critical thinking. And it's really a change in the idea that we're going to engage students in the learning process, not just fill their heads with information from the teacher, that they're, it's going to come from within, and we had a great conversation last night about that. The other thing that's really important is we're embedding 21st century skills within the Common Core. And so the themes that are associated with that look very much like our mission statement with global awareness and entrepreneurial and health and literacy and environment, all the things that we need to be focusing on to bring our students to be ready to work in the 21st century. It's also a big deal about, the idea about learning innovative skills. The idea about the Common Core is not so much short-term remote memory, but long-term analysis to how to take what I've learned and use it in a totally different setting, and that's the idea of innovation. How do I solve a problem from what I know today on something that I never even heard of before, but I have those sort of problem-solving, critical-thinking skills, which is the big difference, as we'll see in a minute, and have some fun with you, related to Common Core. The other thing is just information media and technology skills. There's so much information, it's changing so rapidly. You've all seen it where, you know, here was the information that we had, and it goes like this. There's so much information, sorting through that information and being able to effectively utilize that information media and technology skills. But from what we saw last night, project-based learning with fifth graders, doing awesome PowerPoints, using their smart boards, you know, better than their teachers were using it, was pretty cool moving forward. I think we also need to be thinking, as part of that is life and career skills, knowing that some of the things we talked about, you're going to change jobs five times by the time you're 38 years old. You're going to have a very, you're going to have to be flexible, adaptable, we got to work in social, cultural skills, you know, in the world today, and we need to bring all of that in real-world partnerships within our classrooms to be able to master the Common Core. The Common Core is still just standards that we have to meet, and it's really engaging our students and our staff in that. With that, we've talked several times about the Smarter Balance Assessment. Remember, we belong to a consortium as the state of California, and it's their job to provide the formative interim and summative assessment systems, and that will be done through technology. It is a very, very different system, and it's computer adaptive technologies that as the student is taking the test, the test is reacting to the student. So if I miss it, I'm going to give you another question to see if you just missed it and you didn't understand it, or it's going to say I can take you to a higher level, but particularly for high and low-performing students, it's really going to challenge them. Low-performing students, they're going to bring it down to make sure to find out what they know. High-achieving students, it's going to really push them to the next level. And it's very different. There is no multiple choice in this world. It's short constructive responses, constructive responses, performance tasks, you know, 45 minutes of, or 85 minutes of actually doing work and producing a product on the test. So it's very different real-world problems. So, you can read this. So, in today's environment, on a California standard, the question would be which of the following numbers is odd? And I get a multiple-choice standard of, I can pick A, B, C, or D, and all of us would pick, don't tell me. Okay? Now, but in types of Common Core standards, it would be which of the following numbers does not belong and why? And we need to explain our answer. So we would all know that it's 45 is an odd number, and then we would explain what the difference between odd and even is, and we got a little essay going on here in math, right? Not just multiple choice. Now, we're going to play Smarter Than a Sixth Grader. And so, equivalent algebraic expressions that we can see here is which expression is equivalent to 36X plus 24Y? And previously, we would answer that with maybe a multiple-choice question. Now we're asking it, select which one is yes or no. So looking at that, I want you to do your homework now. Mark some yeses and nos. I'm not asking you to tell anybody, but mark your yeses and nos. And Sean, you have a sixth grader, so you should be doing this math at night. Okay, make it easy for you. A is yes. B is no. C is yes. So very different than, I'm going to do a multiple-choice question, and multiple ways of getting there. So many of the times we think of, there's five ways to get to an answer, how are you going to get to it moving forward? But we're going to see if you can move up to seventh-grade math here, concepts and procedures. And so we have an expression, it is X plus 3Y over 2. And there you have three options, four options, of which one expresses that? Checking your fraction skills here. Mary, could you stand up and give us the answers, please? Yeah. Yeah, there we go. Well, whoops, the good news is, there you go. A is yes, B is no, C is yes, and D is no. And thank God we had the answers in advance. Right. We did not have to do this. Okay? However, our students are going to have to do this, and that's part of, but Nick's conversation was, when I told him we were going to talk about math, you know, is that, you know, we took a little dip. We have a huge focus in this district related to math, and you know that we're bringing in David Chung and Fran Gibson, and they were here this week? Were they here? No. Next week?
David Chung, next week.
Next week? Okay. So we're continually moving forward to try and strengthen our math instruction to support our students in every way we can, and that help comes from quality staff development for our staff, and I think they're really embracing it moving forward. Looking at sample ELA assessments, what we're going to be doing for an assessment that we have is we're going to take a short story, article, a video and statistics, and you're going, from the information that you get from that, you're going to be, you're going to need to respond. So it's not just one piece of information, it's multiple pieces of information moving it forward. Very hard to see, but the task takes 120 minutes. We're breaking it down into 30 minutes with a writing and argumentative essay on virtual schools, and then 85 minutes where students will work independently to compose full-length argumentative essays on virtual schools, referring to their notes as needed, pre-writing, drafting, and revising will be involved. And that is all on computer-aided or adaptive technology to make that work. We have already done an assessment of our technology, as every school district is, do we have the technology necessary to put all this into place? And currently, we do not. We need more, and we'll have to make an investment. Looking next is writing during the school day. This is being in fourth grade. We need to write and revise brief texts. We need to develop a supporting evidence and reasons, elaboration, and develop a conclusion appropriate for, to purpose and the audience. So looking forward, we're going to be talking about doing a rough draft about why we need a longer school day. And so the students, taking this daily schedule, their job, and this is a Smarter Balance assessment, is to revise a paragraph by adding details to this daily schedule to help support the reasons for having a longer school day. So that gives you an idea of what we're trying to do, and then here's the scoring rubric behind it. And this comes to, with any assessment, how do you work that through? And that's what Smarter Balance is doing, because it's supposed to give immediate feedback. I think that is the ultimate challenge. That has been the big challenge of writing assessments for years and years and years, to be able to get instantaneous feedback. All of that has to do with our implementation plan, and we have, we're moving forward and have adopted ELA materials, K-8, with the adoptions that we did two years ago, and then this year at the RLS. The Common Core implementation focus is through Sonoma Leadership, that's what they're talking about. Last year, it was gradual release of responsibility, and now that's weaving in Common Core. You've heard about, from Nick, actually, from, that our district, site administrators and teachers are attending Common Core trainings, and we have teams going down and working on the modules at Napa County Office of Education. There's a huge focus in math. We are working, getting our tenant, our teachers to the math conference, and it was totally focused on Common Core. Our high school teachers are scheduled to attend a Common Core conference next month. I asked them to make sure they'd come and update us. We continue with Diane Lapp and Kelly Johnson with our staff on the implementation. Allen November, as we talked about, will be here to talk about infusing technology, how to get that. It's our recommendation, and working with the primary school, that they transition to Common Core in 1314, so that the standards that they will be using kindergarten, first grade and second grade, because Common Core assessments really start in third grade, is to implement the Common Core well in advance, so that as we move forward. The state is working on, and it just released supplemental materials for math that the state has approved, that are Common Core, and will be looking at a math adoption in the spring of '14 for implementation of new math textbooks. Also, a big deal that we would suggest that people do is go out and look at this, there's a lot of information for parents, both on the CDE website, on the Smarter Balance, and a really nice information in WestEd related to how the implementation of Common Core- Core affects you and your family and your children going forward. The district is committed, as every school district in the United States is committed to implementing the Common Core. It's a major challenge in front of us, and we will continue to keep information in front of you. And I know everybody is focused on the Common Core in today's world, along with all the other things that we have, which is teaching our current standards.
Is there anyone present who wishes to publicly comment? Trustees, any comments or questions concerning the Common Core? Thank you for the update. We're on to item number 11, facilities. This is to approve the application of Ms. Alexandra Haslip to serve in the district's citizen oversight committee. This is an action item. Is there anyone present who wishes to publicly comment on this agenda item? Trustees, any questions? Is there a motion to approve the application of Ms. Alexandra Haslip to serve on the district's citizens oversight committee?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is carried.
Let me just say that we are still looking for a bona fide member of the Taxpayer Association. We are actively recruiting. We have worked with the Napa County Taxpayers Association, who has provided us a number of lists of people who don't live in the district or are current employees of the district. And you're an employee if you get a dollar from us, which means you cannot serve on the citizens oversight committee. So we're still actively recruiting and need a member from a bona fide Taxpayers Association to be on the committee, and that it was due to the tragic death of Richard, who was our Taxpayer Association member and the vice chair of the committee.
Okay. So we have one, is that going to jeopardize a report if we are missing?
No, it is not. Our goal, what we have to do is we have to actively recruit.
Okay.
Depending on where you are, you might not have a person. So what the requirement is, is to actively recruit.
Okay.
And we have actively recruited.
We're on to facilities. Item 11B, approved change orders number 36, folk ed complex, number three, RLS Phase One modernization, and number two, St. Helena High School Special Ed Classroom. This is an action item. Is there anyone present who wishes to publicly comment on this agenda item? Trustees, any comments about the?
No.
Nope.
Does Greg have anything, do you have anything to say about this?
Thank you.
He's not on my list, so I figured he didn't have anything to say.
As usual, change orders, no, continuing.
Eight, ten, so he can talk.
Continuing the series of, these are, you know, necessary changes to complete work, and so everything's outlined. And if there are any questions, I can certainly address them.
And just as on page 59, let's see, so it's on, there's a significant change order relative to the work that was completed in the front of the RLS, because we had to completely redesign the path.
Oh, the access.
And so we, you know, we talk about so many of these things, you know? We talked about that that was going to be a significant change in one of those, and this is that significant change moving forward. It's actually on, something I can't.
The bottom of 59.
Thank you very much, Greg. Appreciate that. The bottom of 59, and you can see the total costs associated with that.
Yeah.
It's significant. And that was, and I'll also provide, that number actually was a, we had a credit in that number for the work that wasn't done, but we had a big number for the work that was done.
And that's the wheelchair accessible ramp, is that right? It was at the ramp?
It was, we always had a ramp in there, but when the footings were determined for the portables, it needed, they needed, the whole thing needed to be pushed closer to the street, which changed the dynamic of the ramp.
Right, okay, right.
And above that, Helmer and Sons, I mean, every time they get in the ground, there's always trouble, right? They're recurring.
I know. Expensive.
Theme.
That is the problem with modernization.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve change orders number 36, three, and two as presented?
I'll move to approve those two change orders.
Three change orders?
Three.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is carried. We're on to item number 11, facilities. Item number C, this is a St. Helena High School pool project and design budget. This is an action item. Mr. Greg Medici, please.
Thank you, President Conwell. In front of all the board, and there are also copies on the back table, are a series of revised agenda items since the, since the agenda posted last Friday. The, in terms of, just to catch us up on where we've been since the last meeting, in December, a recommendation was brought to the board, and at that time, we decided to continue the discussion. So, once all the staff was back, during the first week of being back at school on January 9th, there was a meeting of the pool planning committee in which information was provided to address a letter that the board received, as well as a series of emails that district staff has received. And then yesterday, there was a meeting of the same pool planning committee to address a few more, or to address a few more questions and provide some more information. Further yesterday, there was a vote of the pool planning committee. There are eight voting members on that committee. Six of the members continued their recommendation for a 30-meter pool with a 34-meter add-alternate scenario, and then two of the members abstained from their vote.
Well, Greg's getting ready. Let me talk about the agenda item in particular. So in December, the board, when you tabled the motion, said to bring information back to us. And we said it would be very, there was a discussion about, let's get this done in January, let's get this done in February. I was the one that said it would be very difficult for us to get this to you in January. In planning the agenda, the president and I put this item on for action, because as a board, you can always take an item from action and move it to information. You cannot take an item from information and move it to action, which gives you the flexibility to be able to, if a decision was made that you would, that would been to move forward immediately, you would have been able to take action. The recommendation that we have, that Greg will go over, keeps the ball moving, keeps us working forward, but does give time for multiple inputs and some other things that we'll show you. And that's what our, our action request for you is tonight.
Excellent, and I think we'll get, we'll get, there we go, we'll get the big screen as well. So just to kind of walk through some of the pieces that we have in front of us, so as discussed yesterday, on the 16th, the pool planning committee did vote by majority, six to zero with two abstentions, to continue the recommendation of that committee, that a 30-meter pool be built with an add-alternate scenario for a 34-meter pool. Again, as a reminder, there are eight voting members of that committee, and they have met since October to discuss this recommendation. The 30-meter complex, which is on this slide in AutoCAD form, will have one diving board in front of you, as well as a series of large printouts that are new since December. Our architect, Ken Moller, and his team worked diligently to create these pictures based on the site of St. Helena. And one thing of note, or of significant note, is that this is, this is a 30-meter pool, which, which again is, in terms of scale, everything on this picture is to scale. And as you can see, the distance remaining with all the new decking that has been proposed between the, kind of the edge and the pool, and kind of the space available is certainly limited.
So just on that, I think, looking at the rendering that's here, so there's 13 lanes, if you, 13 on a 34-meter, there's 14 lanes. So there's another lane that would be added across, look at the lines.
Correct.
Would be the difference between a 30 and a 34 when you look at the, sort of the, you were looking at the rendering.
And then the, so the 34, and you can see them as I kind of flip back and forth, but the 34-meter pool, as Superintendent McGuire suggested or explained, extends one more lane and that much more. The, the housing complex, I'm sorry, the bath house, the current design calls for 2,300-plus square feet, and that would include three restroom stalls for the women's restroom and one restroom stall with a few wall units for the men's restroom. Another piece, kind of to bring us away from the PowerPoint for a second, but posted the website is the attachments in this yellow handout in front of the board. The, the series of questions that were received by, by the board and as well as district staff in emails, in a letter to the board and emails, but at the January 9th meeting, all of these, the agenda on the following page is what was handed out. The vision for that first January 9th meeting was a one-hour meeting. The, the agenda was approved, and then the committee, through the course of that first one hour, decided to progress forward. And so that, that committee met for three hours plus that day. But in terms of what was addressed, we did discuss that the needs assessment, ARC PAC has a, a series of questions that was given, that is their method of creating, of kind of creating the, the needs and wants. And so the pool planning committee received that at the November meetings, and had a chance for feedback. And Ken Moller and his team brought back the designs based on the results of that, that questionnaire or needs assessment. In terms of an RFP process, there was no RFP process for, for architectural services. And again, under professional services, just like accountancy, legal work, architecture, professional services, RFPs are not required, but certainly the board's prerogative to approve. The current operating cost of the pool, as also provided, information was provided, and the current operating costs are because of the, the pool was built in the 60s, and so since that time, there's, there have been upgrades over the years. But the meters are not absolutely dedicated to the pool. So we are currently working with Control Co. and Sizer Co. and other energy consultants to finalize the software required to get kind of some sub-meters going. But ultimately, when this new pool complex is built, it will be built with individual meters for both water, natural gas, and electricity, which will allow us instant access right into our PG&E bills and other utility bills to see exactly what the pool costs are. Another question that was addressed was the idea, and this, we do have a slide on, let me flip over that. Through the course of providing information about the Measure C, Measure B, prior to Measure C's existence, and Measure C, now that we have them both, so there was, prior to Measure C existing, the idea was in series C of Measure B, which is the chunk of Measure B, the dollars, over $6 million that have yet to be issued tied to Measure B. Some of those funds would be earmarked for the pool, assuming that all we had was 30 million. And again, whether it's Measure B in isolation with 30 million, or now that we know in total the board has 60 million in funds tied to facilities projects, the board ultimately controls how those funds are spent. The, the current scenario of having $60 million in authorization through B, Measures B and C, the recommendation being brought to the board is that to complete all of the projects on, on the list, the combined $60 million worth of projects, the, the pool budget needs to stay in the area of $3.5 million, which again, the recommendation coming forward in December is, is above that. And bids, once we know actual bids, we can, we can then decide how to go forward. So the question that is outstanding is this idea of 700,000 that was addressed or associated with Measure B, and then, and then the independent association of 3.5 million of Measure C. Ultimately, it's not a, the, it's not a one plus one equals two. So the board is in complete control of where the overall funds are spent. The board has yet to approve the budget tied to the pool. And again, it's the district administration's recommendation that to complete all the projects, $3.5 million is where we want to stay around. Next, the, another question was understanding the different size pool options in a, in a format that physically was on the same sheet. This, so since the December meeting, the, the format that had been provided by our architect, ARC PAC and Mr. Moller, has now been cut and pasted onto one, one Excel sheet. And so this is, just continues the format that he had been providing to us with the various schemes. And so that's, that's what we have in front of us on this large sheet. The, the highlighted column, which is Scheme E, was the recommendation brought to the board in December for the 3.6-plus million dollars of, of projects. In terms of the operating, maintenance and operations and practical operating figures for the key pool options, Mr. Moller and his team have provided the district with, with utility costs, and I'll flip back to that. So the team knows exactly what pumps are going in, exactly how much volume of water is going through those pumps. So going forward, knowing that they have the expertise to make this analysis, we're going to be relying on, on their data and their work to show us how much these various pools will cost. So the, the 30-meter pool option by ARC PAC's estimation of both electricity, natural gas, chemicals, and water is, will be, and this is actually, as Ken described, the, hopefully what is the best-case scenario of us using the thermal blankets properly and, and other pieces that help us save costs. So that, that would be approximately $130,000 a year. And then the, the 34-meter pool, the current estimation is that it would be approximately $148,000 per year for, again, electricity, natural gas, chemicals, and water tied to that facility. Going back to the, the questions that have been asked, one second. The, so we've also covered again, the, the idea of the 700,000 and 3.5 million, the board will approve what the board chooses. The, and in number eight, solar generation is always a conversation. Going forward, it can continue to be a conversation. In the current budget, any, any additions to this budget, whether it was solar or otherwise, would be, would, would continue to put us beyond that $3.5 million range. There has been access provided to all handouts in the facilities meetings. We have binders available, and the public is certainly welcome at any time to come and view those binders. And then, in terms of physical water, gas, and electricity charges, our financial system, which has been audited every year annually, as you know, does have the ability to download the numbers that we have paid, and we are coding to the high school, again, which can't separate just pool costs, but are coding for utility costs at the high school since two... 2003 actually have been provided. The final piece, which is in, in front of you, is a timeline from ARC PAC. In the current vision, if, if in February, at our February board meeting, if, if approval is given, this would be the timeline in front of us, which by the end of this, if all things go well, including weather and, and other unknown factors, February 2014 would be the completion, anticipated completion date.
I think the one thing that Mr. Menachem forgot to, forgot to address was what our recommendation is right up front. And so the recommendation for action tonight is to direct the district administration to review the results of the January 16 Pool Programming and Planning Committee with the Facilities Committee on January 24th, 2013, next Thursday at their regular scheduled meeting. Conduct a public forum related to the Facilities Committee recommendation, prior to final, bringing final back, action back to you on February 14th, 2013, which is what we discussed in December. This keeps the process going, and we have a recommendation that we can actually discuss in the public forum and at the Facilities Committee meeting. So that's our recommendation for you, is for us to continue the process and work towards resolution in February.
Thank you very much. At this point, I would like to open it up if anybody has any public comments they would like to make. Just a reminder that time limit of three minutes, please name and address accordingly. Thank you. Oh, sure. Yeah.
Just provide them down here and we'll pass them down.
Thank you.
So in conjunction with the handouts, there, lettered A, which is the agenda.
Oh, name please and all that, sorry. Name, address, all the standard stuff.
John Simons, 1815, for Hill Drive, St. Helena.
Thank you.
So A is the agenda reference from January 9th, a week, a week or so ago. B is a letter to the school board that four of us co-signed on January 4th. C is a letter that Annie Offord will read on behalf of Kelly Foster, who's away on business. D is the needs assessment that Greg referenced from early November. E is an Excel sheet. F is a timeframe for the pool that's served as a guideline in the past, and G are the gas and electric bills for the high school. I'm going to address about two of these in my comments, but others will address the balance, so. So my purpose in speaking tonight is to ask the school board to honor what I interpreted was our opportunity to engage in the diligence process surrounding the current and potential pool recommendation, and if I understand the recommendation to continue it, that's been honored, so thank you very much for that. I have several foundational perspectives to share. Number one, as a citizen and taxpayer, I want absolutely what's best for the kids and the schoolchildren in St. Helena. I want them to have opportunities, thank you, that was, opportunities to excel in the classroom, in the athletic facilities, and beyond, that exceeded the opportunities I was fortunate enough to have in a different time, different place, and different context. Number two, $60 million between Bond B and Bond C is a great deal of money, and I hope and trust this money will be well-spent and calibrated with measurable outcomes many years in the future. This means, I hope and trust, we will nurture and optimize our students with and beyond the money that is being spent. And three, I expect the processes surrounding the 60 million are tight and sound processes that instill confidence, trust, and collaboration across the broader community, especially with components like the pool that was marketed.
That's our three-minute timer, but I'll, I'll give you like another 30 seconds or a minute, because I stopped you in the beginning, so please continue, but we just want to make sure we're done tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So since I stood before you last month, my confidence and trust in the pool process remains shaky at best, and I want to tell you why. Exhibit A, in epitomizing my concern, was a meeting Greg conducted last Wednesday, January 9th, between the eight members of the Pool Planning Committee. At that meeting, an agenda never seen before, we have distributed to each of you as Exhibit A, was produced, and participants were given three minutes or less to consider and vote on the agenda. The stink of the matter is that at the end of the agenda was a prepackaged joint communication stating, and I quote, "All items on the agenda were covered by the majority vote. The committee was satisfied with the discussion and diligence presented. The Pool Planning Committee recommends ex- pool size," so on and so forth. So this recommendation was voted on as part of an agenda approved at the beginning of a meeting and ever before the actual discussion, discovery, and supporting handout materials were distributed. In several decades of being around meetings and good process, I have never, ever witnessed such a maneuver, and as a layperson, I found this aspect of the process diligence-wise, not to be open or collaborative, but Machiavellian. To several of the items I co-signed to each of, in a letter to each of you on January 4th, Exhibit B in the pack before you, we worked as a group over the holidays and in light of what you told us in mid-December, that we would have the opportunity to engage. I will address just two of these items that remain unresolved in conjunction with the new pool. They are mostly related. Bond B's scope and money. To quote from the exact ballot language from November 2010, "A portion of Bond B was to, and I quote, 'develop plans and specs for future capital projects to be paid for, from bonds at, at future elections, including a new auditorium and a swimming pool.'" Also, from the district's webpage and blog entitled "Making a Difference" and dated on September 17th, 2010, the district indicates, "In the end, we included language about the auditorium and pool, that we did so when we moved forward with the next steps for the pool. We have funding to develop plans that can provide with a community a vision and reasonable cost estimates." I've never seen any kind of vision at any point since I became involved in the diligence process in early October, frankly, because one doesn't exist. I have seen a handout Greg produced in September of this year in conjunction with 170,000 used to hire the consultant, and as part of that handout is, is a Measure B status report that shows $700,000 associated with developed plans and specs for future bond election projects, i.e. the $700,000 line item, is specifically listed for the pool. So even if the $170,000 is considered as part of Bond B, where is, to borrow the district phrase in the marketing materials, the community vision? Also, where is the other $530,000 from the September exhibit gone, if not towards the pool, facility, planning, and scoping costs? Would you like me to finish?
Please, yeah, sorry.
Lastly, why isn't the 700,000 able to be combined with the 3.5 million if in Bond C, if it was specifically earmarked in September of this year toward the pool? Secondly, and lastly, to the January 4th letter, and my final item for the board tonight, why wasn't a high-level, community-wide needs assessment performed in conjunction with Bond B, given that we had two years and apparently $700,000 to address vision and facility scoping? A one-page assessment was given to the Pool Planning Committee members by the consultant in early November of this year, in my understanding, it was handed back within minutes or hours. Beyond zero dollars in Bond B or Bond C being spent towards a simple needs assessment, further evidence resides in the fact that not one was done, in that absolutely zero new programs have been listed within any of the pool options that have been considered, certainly not in the recommended option. If so, there would be mention of those programs by name, anticipated participation numbers, revenues, and associated expenses. My further understanding is that a device or a convention, which I have not heard of until recently, called a Survey Monkey now exists and can be deployed quickly to adequately gauge what the broader community may need and value in terms of aquatics programs. In summary, I look forward to continuing to collaborate and support an ultimate recommendation based on well-communicated and well-understood facts. I know the pool is being built for the children of our community. I get, I truly understand that fact, and I support it and subordinate my own likes or needs to the greater good. I also understand that we, as a community, have been asked to pay for $60 million worth of projects, and in the case of the pool, I was asked as a citizen and taxpayer to market and support the bond money with the understanding that a common vision and future reality would indeed occur. I don't think it's fair to say now, after the bonds have been passed by 243 and 212 votes respectively, that it's only the kids' and school needs that are germane. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else who would like to publicly comment on the agenda item? And please try to keep it to three minutes, thanks.
Good evening. My name is Annie Offord. I live at 761 Granada Court, and I'm reading this on behalf of Mr. Kelly Foster this evening. Members of the school board, a brief personal introduction. My family and I moved to St. Helena in November. My real estate development firm has been working for several years on the redevelopment of Silver Rose Project in Calistoga. I am getting to know many of the cyclists and swimmers who reside in St. Helena, and I have recently studied much of the materials surrounding the planning, costing, and funding of the new pool. This is an exciting opportunity for the high school and the community that warrants a thorough and thoughtful planning process. On the professional level, my firm, Bald Mountain Development, has built a number of resorts, each including spa, fitness, and pools. We have considerable experience in the planning, engineering, costing, construction, and operation of resort pools and related amenities. Ironically and through sheer coincidence, my new next-door neighbors on Paulson Court are Eric and Kathy Chesky, who assisted us in the design of the spa and fitness facilities years ago for what is now Rosewood San Miguel Alende Resort in central Mexico. Now, this resort was recently named the number-one hotel in Mexico by readers of Conde Nast Traveler. We would be happy to contribute the time and expertise of our firm in helping you plan, price, bid, and construct the new pool. Specifically, we have experience in the following relevant areas: market studies and needs assessment, site planning, cost-benefit analysis, construction cost estimates, bid packers' preparation, bid solicitation, bid review, construction management. We are not proposing to contract with the school district in a formal engagement, however, we would happily donate some amount of our time and expertise in the above areas to assist the process. As follows: Conduct a comprehensive survey of the residents of St. Helena to determine pool uses that would be of the greatest benefit to the larger number of students and residents. And this could be quickly and easily accomplished by placing the one-page need survey shared recently with a few individuals online via a survey tool such as Survey Monkey. Number two, compile and circulate a summary of the survey results. Three, recommend cost-benefit options that serve all of the high school's aquatic needs and the largest possible percentage of the prioritized community aquatic needs within the allotted budget. Four, conduct a thorough peer review of the cost estimates being compiled for the various pool configurations being considered. Five, host any community forums for the discussion of pool options and possible aquatic programs afforded the community by the proper choices.
Please go ahead and finish.
Thank you. Choices of the possible options. As an avid lap swimmer who has frequented the Calistoga Community Pool since its opening a few years ago, I believe there are many valuable lessons available from other communities as to the pool configuration and programming that serve the community best. Also, as a former resident of Menlo Park for decades, I would encourage the board to study the design programming of community pools such as Menlo Parks. It serves a wide variety of residents ranging from infant swim lessons through age-group swim teams, recreational swim master's programs, teen adult water polo, and water aerobics. No other facility in Menlo Park provides so much joy and healthy living to its residents as the community pool. I believe St. Helena residents would also benefit greatly from a rich, thoughtful, comprehensive aquatic program. I would encourage the board to carefully consider all aspects of this once-in-decades opportunity, construct a fabulous facility that would put smiles on the faces of many St. Helena high school students and community residents. My name again is Mr. Kelly Foster, 1151 Paulson Crescent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
My name is Paul Osmuth. I live at 141 Noel Circle, St. Helena, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I've been a competitive swimmer since the age of seven. I've competed around the world, really, in pool competitions and open-water swimming competitions. I've been an Olympic coach in the last two Olympics, and I'm very grateful and respect the work that you've done, and also the swimming committee on behalf of the, the work that, that prepared and for the pool. You got a big challenge in front of you. I was seeing Cindy tonight, I thought back to our skateboard project, and the really cool thing about the skateboard project was that it was very inclusive and involved a broad range of the community for a long period of time. And we started with one idea, and that morphed into something different over time, but it took a little time to figure out where was the best place for that skate park and what was the right configuration, and took a lot of people to be involved. The athletes, especially the young athletes, that wanted to use the facility, as well as other people in the community. So I guess that's what I'm here tonight to talk about the most, is just to say, it feels like to me, from what I'm hearing from the community, is it needs a little more time. It needs a little more community time. And I also want to say how much I respect Kevin for the job, the great job he's done in building the program with the waves and with the high school, and early days with the master's team, and have the utmost respect for him and the driving force he's been to bring it to this point. Now you have tonight, in front of you, the opportunity to give it a little more time, and I'll just, I've not been involved, Kevin asked me to be involved in the early days, and I absolutely just didn't have the time, and I'm sorry I didn't. But I'm feeling a lot of restlessness within the community regarding this, and that's where it falls back on you. Is it going to be just a competitive pool for the competitive high school and wave swim team, or is it going to be a pool that involves the whole community? A pool that can have athletes who have a competitiveness, whether it's swimming, water polo, diving, synchronized swimming, that can work at the same time while somebody else is over there doing scuba lessons, or lifesaving lessons, or just free swimming year-round? So I'm just encouraging you tonight to give it a little more time, open it up a little more to the community, and I think that's, that's what this opportunity presents. You have the opportunity to build a pool that's going to be in this community for the next 50 years, and that's a big responsibility, and I'm just encouraging you tonight to, to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? Thanks.
Vicki Sirianni, 1 Del Campo Court. Thank you for letting us be here again. The Excel sheet, which is Exhibit E, which we were given, is a concern in that the numbers, I, I think there was a new one that's been passed out, we haven't seen that, but the one that we had has, the numbers don't agree. The foots of some of them have $4,000, $3,000, 38, whatever, the next set over at the bottom have 2,000, 2 million. Numbers are missing, and the 30-meter with the 34- And the 30-meter with the 34-alternate, it's an additional $418,000 according to the figures, which makes a 30-meter go from 3.6 to over $4 million. I just think these are, I don't know who's paying for this. I don't know where that's coming from, and if it's bond B, great, whatever. But the concern is, is that if we're trying to stay under 3.6, who's got the $4.8, $418,000? I just need to understand that. As far as the timeline, originally when we got it as a pool committee, I am a pool committee member, it said that the timeline was that the pool would finish on October 1, the original one that we got. At some point, it went to 12/1 as a completion date. I couldn't find that, which still leaves us three months to get to February, December, January, and February. So it gives us a little bit of time to possibly not hurry. The operating cost, which is G, Greg sent all these numbers over. I have looked through them for hours. The total cost for the high school for operating cost with gas, electric, and water is $228,000, give or take, down to $216,000. At the rates that you have for the future, it says basically that a 25-by-30 meter is $130,000. If we're currently paying $130,000, that means the pool is over half the cost to the high school. Maybe it is. We just don't know. And it's, you know, it's a building, it's a facility. Yes, pools are expensive, I get that, but we just, without a baseline, we don't know where to go with these other numbers. As far as the pool is concerned, the 30-meter was listed, when I went through all of Ken's numbers, it was listed to come up to just the pool without everything else, was $1,200,000. This isn't on that example, sorry. $1,200,000, $207, something. The pool on the generic is $1,218. There's a difference of about $10,000, $15,000 on those two numbers. You go to the 34-meter, it's listed at 1.7, $1,710. It goes up to $1,770. You look at the 50-meter pool, and it goes from 1.... Sorry, I can't remember. I know the difference, it was like $418,000. So there's a difference in... May I continue?
Just please keep it...
No, no, I'm almost done. So the question is just, the percentage changed dramatically on the 50-meter. It went up $418,000 when the 34-meter went up 70, and it went up 12. That just seems like an egregious or, you know, just an interesting number where that came from, when I added up all of Ken's numbers originally from all the pieces of paper. The other thing is, is that when we voted, the two abstentions on the pool committee, I think that should be a neon light. If two people on the pool committee don't know what to vote for, I think that means that information is still necessary, that we couldn't come, that two people could not come to a conclusion to vote for any size pool. I think that just needs to be addressed. And I think that there are people here that have offered professional services that do this for a living. I think if we could take the time and utilize their services, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the board concerning the pool? Okay, at this point, trustees, questions, comments, concerns?
I'll start. It's... You know, for me, again, on the facilities committee, not a difficult decision. It's, we have a very small campus here. As much as a large 50-meter pool sounds great, I truly believe we don't have the room, and we clearly don't have the money, and there aren't the funds out there. We don't have the money to build it, we don't have the money to operate it, and we pledged to the community that we wouldn't, you know, we offered a $3.5 billion, million-dollar project, and, you know, I feel we need to focus on the district, what's right for the district. Yes, there are community funds, but, you know, this is not a country club, this is a district, and we've got to build the right-sized pool. And there's no question in my mind, the recommendation of this sized pool is the right one, and I'm absolutely ready to move forward on that.
Comments, concerns? Trustees?
I was wondering if we would be, we got the letter from the Napa Valley Taxpayers Association. Is that something that we could share with the public as far as their concerns?
The Star did a nice job.
Yeah, I know. So that was actually a poor question. Yeah, yeah. So...
We will share that. We can, we'll post it on our website and share it with the committee.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Swimming starts in February, right, Kevin?
Yes.
Okay. I'm comfortable with the recommendation the district has made. Timeline you've provided us would still allow the pool to be completed in February in time for swimming next year. The recommendation being, go to facilities next week and have a public forum and have us, bring it back to us on February 14th for action.
And I'm fine with that, but I'm curious, who are we anticipating on this public forum to come out of? Are there... I just don't know who's... I mean, no one's talking to me about wanting to be heard, so I don't have, I'm not getting the feeling that, and I'm not sure what that's going to accomplish or who, you know, it'd be interesting to see, but we'll see. But I have a feeling that, you know, I don't know, it just seems that we spent a lot of time on this.
Right.
And people have had the opportunity to, you know, give us their thoughts and have done so.
I want to ask just a question, just a procedural question that was kind of brought up and just to be clarified. So, right now, our budget is $3.5 million for the pool, and let's say that a 30-meter pool comes back and it's, let's say it's 3.6. What happens then? We've never, we haven't, we've never bid a project yet that has come back over, that's been outside of our numbers, so how do we, how does that, what happens then? So the number-one thing is that the district has to have the money to let the contract, and we have an estimate that we provide to you, and if any contractor wanted to know, it's available, about what the estimated cost of the building is, because we do multiple cost estimates. At that point, the board has to make a decision whether or not to accept that bid and move forward with that. If the bid is more than 5% or 10%, I don't know the number in this contract, more than 5% over the amount, the architect is required to redesign the building to bring it down into the specified cost, and we would rebid it again. The methodology used for add alternates being that you have a base product and a minor change being, in this case, minor change being adding a couple meters to the pool for, you would issue an addendum saying that we want a price, we want a base price, and we want a price on this. And then you would be able to evaluate whether or not you would approve that price. The conversation that has been had at the facilities committee is, you know, if we're in a good bid climate, if we can, you know, move this forward quickly and a variety of other things, that, before everybody and their brother puts their $100 million bond money out to work, that we may be able to get a pool for maybe $100,000, $200,000 less, which may be allow us to go at, to add these alternates. That's your decision at bid time, and so there is no requirement, if the add alt comes in, at a dollar or $10 million for you to accept it. And there's a process in which you have to go through of accepting the base bid from all the bidders, whether, no matter what the add alternate price is. It's a very convoluted governmental process for awarding add alt bids, add alternate bids. Thank you for refreshing my mind, because I just, we often get buried in some of the numbers, and it's difficult to see out. So the recommendation is that we, it will be come back to the facilities committee on January 24th?
Yes, January 24th.
Right, that'll come back the 24th, and that is here at 7 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, thank you. And then a to-be-announced public forum between that and February 14th as a second meeting. That is also an open public forum. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a question as far as the add alternate. So what you're saying with that is, so if we, so if we approve the add alternate, the 34-meter, we still have another chance, if it goes over the budget, we have a chance to say not to do that. Is that correct in saying then?
So you have a base price, and the board can always reject all bids.
Okay.
Okay, so no matter what, the board can reject all bids. Traditionally, you, so if you, I'm just going to make up a number here. You have a budget of $3,643,000. If that came in at $3.7 million, the board may choose to spend the extra $53,000, $57,000 and award that bid. You could also reject all bids. If, let's say that it came in, add alternate, so it came in at 3.5 million, and the add alternate was $100,000, you could choose to take the 3.5 or the 3.5 plus the $100,000 and award the base bid and the add alternate. So you, it gives you a lot of greater flexibility. It's not two different-sized pools, it's not, but it's add taking the base product and adding things. Items that you would think that we might be part of an add alternate are scoreboards and a variety of other things that maybe we want an enhanced scoreboard. An example being many times, and we saw this with the ag boosters, if we put it on as an add alternate and it comes in higher, we would go to the pool board that has $500,000 in their checking account and say, would you like to contribute to this?
Right, right.
And if they do, then you would award it. If not, if it wasn't in your recommendation, you wouldn't award it. It wouldn't be, you wouldn't accept that add alternate. And you've seen that in our bids, where we have a base bid, especially on the maintenance facility, and we had several add alternates. If you remember, on the vocational education complex, we were very concerned about the pricing that came in, and we did the veneer, the stone veneer, as an add alternate. The pricing came in low enough, we were able to add the add alternate, and the ag boosters paid the difference with their $150,000 donation to the project.
Right, right. And then with the, when we reject the bids, refresh my mind, how long will it take to rebid that then? Is it like a couple of weeks or...
Guess you're into details here.
I'm just interested in timing.
So bidding, bidding with a public works job in the state of California requires us to advertise in a paper of local circulation for a minimum of two weeks. What you, it does no good to go out and, so we reject all bids, it would not be in our best interest to go out in two weeks and resubmit the same bid package. We have to modify the bid package, determine what we're going to take out of the scope of the work, and then rebid the job with the new scope. So the actual timeline would take two weeks, a special meeting, and, you know, a week to analyze it. The issue is, you have to redesign the plans, because why would we envision that just putting it out to bid again would get a different number?
Right, right.
Complicated answer, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's informative. Yeah, okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the St. Helena High School pool project and budget design recommendation as presented by the district?
The recommendation...
Actually, let me just, let me just change that, because it's...
I got a recommendation.
I know, I know. All right, let's see. As recommended. Let's try it. Is there a motion to approve the St. Helena High School pool project as recommended? So that the recommendation would be the two meetings.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is carried. We are on... Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't vote. We are on to Measure B and C bond sales. This is information-only. Superintendent McQuarrie?
And I might suggest that some pool folks hang around to listen to this about, so that you can understand the bonding facility issues that we face as a district, since you were critical of some of those facts. So we do, in fact, are fortunate that Lalo Trujillo is here to talk about bonds for Measure B and C, which is very critical to our future as a school district. We did provide a tremendous amount of detail for you, and we're sort of at a crossroads related to financing, which is very critical within our school district. So just as a, sort of a memory place of where we were, when we passed Measure B, we sold Series A and B. Because of the qualified school construction bonds, we were able to issue more money than we had planned, and we were able to get $23 million under Series A and B. That left $6 million for future projects. Our best estimate is that we would get that money in 2016, if you remember way back when, when we put this whole thing together. That $6.7 million included the $700,000 for the pool, the $1.1 million, and all of the other projects that we haven't completed. With that, with the next project that we're going to bring to you, we will have exhausted all $23 million, all right? And we do not have any other funds available. So this is very critical moving forward. So we've been working with the finance team to come up with options about how we can access Measure B funds so that we have the funding available to move forward on all of these projects, because we, if you sort of remember, we took the $700,000 in Measure B and the $1.8 million, and we're transferring that, we've got to get the cash, and we transfer that cash to Measure C, which allows us to build a $13 million auditorium and a $3.5 million. That funding is critical to be able to do this. So that's really important. The next thing that we have is that Measure B was a tax extension, and a tax extension utilizes, to be able to afford it, really has us using capital appreciation bonds, which takes the debt and stacks it out into the future so that we can get the money now using the standard dollars that we have to be able to afford the projects. The good news about Measure C is that is a tax increase, and we can actually move, start assessing and moving into paying off the debt even quicker as part of that, which is a big deal. So that all of the stuff that we've put together for you is all these options. It says February 2013. It's not realistic that we could do it in February of '13. We've been working with bond counsel, the underwriters, our financial analysts, and everyone else to be able to, we were trying to get it done by February, not realistic. The best we could do is maybe March now, and we'll bring, and this is for information, we'll bring it back to you. Lot of decisions here. The bottom line is, we're out of money in Measure B, and we don't have the ability to get it. So not like many people think. We pass a $30 million bond, we don't get $30 million. We have to structure it within what you committed to as a board, and what we advise you is the tax rate would not go over $25.50 for the life of Measure B. We also have the old Measure A refunding out there, and the new things that all sort of complicate this. So we've come up with a variety of options that we want to run through with you. It's late at night, complex information, but we want to be able to get it to you. And also, now, there's a greater scrutiny on capital appreciation bonds because of the things that happened in Southern California, where a district issued $100 million of debt and paid over $1 billion back. Absolutely, people should be upset about that. This board has had a very, very fiscal, conservative stance on bonds, which I bring to you as my recommendations, because I'm very fiscally conservative on bonds as well and want to protect the taxpayers as much as possible. But with that, when we look at those numbers, what we do see is that with Series C, at the same time in March or February, we can do about $24 million worth of bonds. So with that, when you look at that $24 million, which, this is fairly critical in that, that $24 million, if we don't... critical in that, that 24 million, if we don't have the other funds to access, if our first priority is the auditorium and our second priority is, excuse me, technology, all of this is for naught if we can't go out and get access to the funding, which is critical. You also have in your, because of the headlines, and in fact, we were listed in the LA Times as a district who did not do a good job of selling our previous caps. However, that LA Times article now has been discounted because what they did out of the series is took one bond and said you didn't do a good job on the debt ratio on that bond, not looking at the complete analysis of the debt ratio. And we're very conscious of the debt ratio and making sure that we pay off the funds as quickly as possible. Lots of stuff related in here. And now we have a letter from Tom Torlicson and Bill Lockyer who are asking districts to put a moratorium on capital appreciation bonds until new legislation can be passed. So we have to come up with some real hard decisions and have a real conversation about where we're going as a district. We've also provided you with the, sort of the definitions of the current interest bonds, a capital appreciation bond, and a convertible, and capital appreciation is being cabs, and a convertible cap. Okay? And so what we need to do now is walk you through some scenarios so that you can understand the impact that we are going to be asking you in the future with our bond financing team to come together on. All right, so if you actually look at these things that are very hard to see, but I'm going to, and we're on page 64. So on page 64, this is the debt financing, the tax payment, and the repayment schedule associated with measure B. It also has measure A on it. So what you can see is the measure A funds, bonds are gone in 2019. So that's a constraint that the tax base for those bonds is over $25. So we can't put any bond indebtedness in those years. The qualified school construction bonds, which we are very fortunate to receive as a school district, and in fact, saved our taxpayers, if you remember, millions of dollars. So we are doing that, $13.8 million, which is in the second column, series B, in which we received the 13 million. Because of the federal subsidy, the only, we're not paying any interest, we're only paying the principal back. Right? And you know, that was a great thing for us because we were also able to take the federal subsidy, deposit it, do some other things, which were phenomenal. So that was a seven-year bond under the qualified school construction bond. For our series B, you'll see that it, the debt starts in 2025 and is paid off in 2035. So it's a very, very short-term bond, but it does use capital appreciation bonds because you can see we've issued the bonds. We got the principal, $9,450,000. We'll pay back 36 million, a debt ratio of 3.85, which in all categories is a ratio that is acceptable for a debt and is certainly not a 10 to 1 ratio. But those funds are gone. And now you can see when we go to some options that we're looking at, being that if we did a series C in 2013, we could do, we could get $2,271,000 based upon our projected assessed valuation, our projected tax rate, and we would have that, those would be capital appreciation bonds, starting repayment in 2036 to 2041. Okay? And that has a debt ratio of 4.31. And I believe that's too high of a debt ratio. That's an option that we probably would not want to consider at this time. We also then can look at, looking at 2013 series D, okay, where we're able to stack the debt in and come up with, I'm sorry, and that actually is, it should be 14, where we would do another $4 million in the next year. That debt on that would be 18, but you can see how we can start paying back the debt in 2029, and that the cabs, those larger numbers that are out there, are paid off in 2023. All of these are below the 25-year maximum term that we've talked about as a board. But you can see we're not accessing funds soon enough to get these projects done. Okay? And so then you look at the overall debt ratio of series A, B, C, and D. The debt ratio is 2.61. The total that we will get is 30 million. The total payback is $78 million. Okay? So we're well ahead of where we were, but we've done a great job of spending the money. We have wonderful projects that the community is proud of moving forward because we've done a great job putting it all together. But now we're at a point where we've got to determine what do we want to do moving forward. And there's a lot, there's new legislation coming out about cabs, a variety of other things, lot of scrutiny moving forward. So we put together another analysis in which you can see, which is on page 65, the first three columns are all the same. Series B, which is the 2013 series, you see we're not paying a lot, but we're getting the debt in right away, and then having the cabs out into the future. These are all 24-year bonds, and you can see the debt ratio is about 4.91. Total debt on the whole thing is 2.61 again. So it's just giving you options. Now that, we can get those funds in February of 2013. We're just looking at any kind of option we can get. The next page gives, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
The next page, and once again, this is what we have to do and go through. We're going to go through it many times, it's late at night, but we go through the same thing, which, okay, let's issue the 6.7 in 2014. So we'll wait a whole nother year. With that, we can get the 6.6 with a debt ratio of 4.01. Right? It's sort of the limit. The total overall is 2.56. So we have to have a conversation about, do we want to go now? Do we want to wait a year? Do we want to push it out till 2016? What you have to do is assume what the time value of money is. Question that you would have, if you look at the total repayment, getting the money in February of 2013, the repayment is $78,269,000. Flip over the page, if we wait a year, the repayment is $77,056. So there's a cost, right, overall to the taxpayers to get the funding earlier. We have to weigh that on the cost of the project. I guarantee you, the cost of the project that we do today will be lower than the cost of the project we do three years from now. Okay? So we have to, we have to work through and get the time value of that money and determine whether or not you're there. I can guarantee you, we will be criticized, we will be questioned if we move forward. The problem is, we're at a very different timeline than the state of California. The state is not going to pass a bill tomorrow and put it in place so we know what's going on. Many districts today are in the market because they're saying, quite frankly, the state, you don't have authority to tell us what to do, and you have said you're turning all this over to local control. There is no state bond. There is none of this stuff. And so we have to take considerations, and we are conservative and frugal. That leads us to another issue that we have, is it doesn't look, based on the governor does not support putting a state bond on the ballot. We are going to get, our plan was to get $1.9 million of state money, right? But if there's no bond, there's no cash. We can go through the process, you have to borrow, a variety of other things. So we are at a little bit of a crossroads. The plan that's been put together for you, which is on the next page, in relationship to measure C, is $24 million, February, March timeline, and then another $6 million in 2015. And remember, all of our project lists have very specific timelines where we're going to do them. We get this money first, we do these projects, we get this money second, we do these projects. Analysis of the pool and auditorium. Our goal was never to even start the planning process until 2016, '17. But because of measure C being pushed up four years, we were able to get the process going quicker. So that gives you an analysis of one of the big, two big conversations we have to have. Sell it earlier, incur more debt, and whether or not we're comfortable with issuing capital appreciation bonds or convertible appreciation bonds. Looking at measure C, when we look at that as well, we're looking at selling $24 million, and you notice that keeps us at the $22 tax rate, which is what we projected based upon our projected assessed valuation growth. The good news is, we're paying it off immediately. These are 25-year bonds. The debt payment ratio on these, very different, 2.6% to 1. When we look at measure B, the $6 million that would come in 2015, which is all the other projects. Right? And so if we can't like put all these pieces together, the conversation we're having for an hour is mute because we don't have the funding to be able to move it forward. So we have to determine where do we want to go and what are those priorities? The total overall of that is 66 million, a 2.2% change. You also know that we have to pay people to help us issue bonds. And with that, we have cost of issuance. Within our last bond, the cost of issuance was $226,000. You also know that we renegotiated many of our contracts, and we renegotiated them with the thought process that if we did smaller measure B series along with a larger measure C series, that we should not have to pay twice for that. So we have renegotiated those so that we have a lower overall cost of issuance if we do them together. So that we, you know, we're really, we actually really have a plan here going forward. And you can see the scenarios of each one of those, how much it costs to issue based upon some rough estimates and the dollars. So once again, it's less expensive for us to issue them all together. If we issue them separately and if we do all the sales, those costs of issuances will be significant. We also then gave you a copy on page 70, which is the article from, or the link to the article related to capital appreciation bonds, and the title was, "California School District Face Huge Debt on Risky Bonds." Paying 10 to 20, you know, so it's a great headline. School districts are paying 10 to 20 times the amount they borrowed. As far as we know, there was only one that paid 10 times more. There was nothing that was ever 20, but the LA Times gets to make up what they want to say. And then what we did is we cut out, they listed 200 districts, and we cut out Napa County on the issues of our bonds. So we are, so Calistoga is listed twice, How Mountain listed once, Napa Valley listed three times, and Sanlana Unified listed once. And you notice they pulled out a sale in 2011 for $837,426 and showed that the debt payment on that one bond in that one year, you notice it was a 17-year bond, so very quickly paid off, had a debt ratio of 5.7%. Once again, when you look at the data that we've shown, you show no 5.71% because they pulled one number out and said, this is the way that recommends. But Lalo's going to come up and answer any questions that we might have, and I'm glad he's here going forward. Because what we need to do is come back to you with a structure to sell those bonds. Lalo's been working with Greg to put in together all of the information that you know that we have to put together to be able to sell bonds, our rating agency presentations, all of our financials together, and working towards getting those bonds into the market. And we do that with Piper Jaffray. So what I see is some fairly big issues because what we got to do is, in the next couple of meetings, establish how much money we have, but the priority of the projects that we have are, are we willing to be in the market with not cabs, but callable cabs or convertible cabs, which are not part of the legislation that has been introduced, where all of our bonds are for less than 25 years. We are conservative, where there's no crazy debt ratios that are on that. But even with that, we have to figure out where we're going and then how we're going to allocate those funds. So we told you two months ago, we're out of money. That's why we're bringing this to you. And even if we do measure C, we don't have the funds because all of the stuff related to measure C for the future planning was in measure B but not planned until, basically was not planned for sale originally until 2016. Because of the great job we did, we were able to move it up. And now there's a cloud hanging over. So Lalo, what did I miss out of all of that?
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. I don't think you missed anything. I want to point out something though, that emphasized actually something you said. There's a lot of politics behind the talk. And the media is, you know, they're having a great time pulling data, manipulating data to present their case. I mean, just the whole title of risky bonds. Who's that risky to? A geo-bond isn't a risky bond. This is the weird title, and that's the LA Times. Let me offer an example very quickly for how they've distorted this to make it such that any cab is a bad cab. That's basically the message that they're getting out there. If you think of your mortgage, take any average 30-year mortgage, people get an average rate, you know, let's just say you go out there to the bank and you get a 4% rate on your mortgage. That's not what you're paying for every individual piece that you're borrowing. You're borrowing over 30 years, and you're paying back over 30 years. If you were to look at that last payment in the 30th year, it's a heck of a lot more than 4%. All right, so whereas the first payments in the first year are significantly lower, they're less than 1%, you get an average, right? That's the average. So you know, that's basically what they're saying is everybody out there is a dummy because they're paying that last 30-year payment at an exorbitant rate, which is probably like 8%, 8.5% if you do the average. What they've done here is they picked your mortgage and they just concentrated on the back end. When you look at a program, it has to be seen that way. A bond program is a program that has to be seen as a whole. So when you measure what the rates you're paying for the back end of the program, it's just like your mortgage. It's envisioned from the get-go, so you look at the whole thing. And if you look at the whole program, after we were to issue this next, last series in measure B, you're still very much below the 4.0. You're talking a little bit over 2. And keep in mind that this district was very prudent in getting the subsidized, federally subsidized rates for the benefit of the local area. So this district has, to me, a very efficient program irrespective of whether or not you issue cabs. If you were to issue those cabs, it's still, by any measure, a very prudent program. It needs to be seen that way because otherwise, if you didn't approach a bond program in a fashion that takes it into pieces, you would actually have every bond issue be very long. Every one of them would be 30 years, and think of it like a block. If I take a block and I split it this way vertically, that's how a normal program, oops, just knocked this off. Can you still hear me? Can you still hear me? Okay. If I take a block and that represents your program, a rectangle, that's your bond program, the most efficient way to get that done is you slice it vertically. So that the first issue is very efficient, very low cost. Next issue is a little bit more costly. The last issue is going to be very costly. You combine them. The alternative, which is what they're suggesting, if they have their way, is you just slice it horizontally. So every issue is very inefficient. Every issue goes all the way out. And that's basically what they're going to push people to do, and that's because they're not finance people, they're politicians, and they don't really see what's behind it. So I would ask you, I would urge you to work with administration, work with the finance team to understand what's behind the numbers as you make your decision. Because ultimately, obviously, you're going to get, as Bill said, some level of criticism if you do opt to go up for cabs, but you should understand what it is that you're doing if you decide to opt to go with cabs. Anyway, any questions you might have?
First, I'm going to open it up. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Trustees?
Yes.
Questions?
I have a couple of.
I have, I have a couple of, yeah. So when I'm just looking at cost of issuance under the three scenarios, basically, scenario number two is roughly about $100,000 less to issue. Is that, am I, am I reading? I, all I want to do is get confirmation that I'm actually reading the charts right, and I got that. So if we did scenario two, it would be $100,000 less is what we would be paying the bond?
Yes.
Okay. And essentially, if we do one or three, they're roughly the same $16,000 difference between issuing those two. Okay?
And we're not stacking them on top of each.
Right. So even though it says February, if it turns to March, is it still essentially the same numbers?
All this, everything is the same.
Okay. So then I look at the repayment plans, and basically on the three scenarios, and if the most expensive repayment plan is the very first one, which is scenario one, at Scenario two is, let me make sure I get this right, is $56,000 less is all in the repayment plan. However, scenario three, if we chose that route, we would save $1.2 million in repayment.
Yes.
So the question to me is, is how critical are the time project, I mean, that we have to look at as a board, is how critical the time projects are, and how we're going to fit it into those buckets?
Right.
And make those choices of saying, yes, we're going to ask the taxpayers, we're going to keep them from getting a $1.2 million discount, but we're going to build something a year and a half earlier, or four years earlier, or something. That's the trade-off.
Trade-off. It's the value of money today.
Okay.
I, I might want to point something else also to consider. Keep in mind that the finance team, specifically the underwriters, when they made these projections, they're on the basis of today's rates holding. So unfortunately, none of us have that crystal ball to know what happens one year from now.
Right.
So that's the downside to whether or not that savings could be realized in 2014. Something to consider.
Okay. So if, so I guess I'm just confused myself.
They're tied in.
Interest rates, or LIBOR, or?
Yeah. So, so basically, this forward-looking scenario says, if rates were to hold?
Right.
In 2014, you could issue this at this cost. Obviously, not knowing what rates are going to be, the risk is that savings may never be realized. You actually may end up paying more if rates go up.
So if rates go up, there's a very good chance that we would be asking the, we would, the, just.
The million dollars wouldn't be safe.
Right. The million dollars wouldn't be safe. Thank you. Okay. All right. Okay.
Question for Greg and, and Bill. What is, do you know offhand, I remember Greystone West is our construction consultants. They're projecting costs, construction costs going up. Do you remember what the latest is?
They are, but I can't, I, off the top of my head, I can't tell you.
But it's.
It is significant.
It's a consideration.
Yeah. The escalation, building escalation cost is getting to be a big deal. And one of the things that was talked about in the pool issue is that that changed, that the architect was looking at, and it wasn't Prop 30, or it wasn't our bond, it was after the election where hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of school projects were approved.
Right.
And when hundreds and hundreds of million dollars of school projects are approved, cost goes up. It's not the other way around, because people have work. And when you have work, you're not as interested in bidding X on the job to get it. Same thing why we try and bid all of our jobs earlier. If I'm, if I don't have a job yet, I, I bid a lower cost to get a job. If I'm later, and all these other construction projects, school jobs have been bid, well, I just throw in a number, because I don't really care if I get it, and that number's going to be pretty big.
And supplies could go up, and materials.
Right.
Would it be possible, and I apologize if you've explained this, to issue the full $30 million of Measure C bonds now?
It's not.
It's not.
We have to guarantee, and that's why if you looked at, at, on your page, page 68, the tax rate.
Oh, right.
What you agreed was you would not have a tax rate more than $22.
So because of that, we couldn't do the 30 now, which would potentially save the money, because we, we get to do all, all the projects we want, we'd put, push the 6.8 in Measure B out, potentially save money, but we can't.
And that was in all of our conversations, that we will net, we won't get the 30 million. That's why there's this on the list, there's this on the list, over a multi-year period, which, quite frankly, nobody understands. They all think that we're going to like, build it tomorrow. And the pool was, quite frankly, never intended to be in this group, right? The pool was way up. It's in the, it's in the second half of the things, because we weren't going to get the 700 million. 700 million, that'd be nice. 700,000. Now, what we did was we moved it up, thinking that we were going to be able to issue the 6.7 million, you know, we were lowering costs, we had this great plan to go together, and now, you know, there's a cloud over the methodology in which we were going to deliver the financing. And we want to make sure you're fully aware, and we'll spend as much time, not tonight, as much time as necessary to make sure that we made the right decision for the projects that we want to get built, and if, if, if we're not willing to do X, that means project X goes away until we are such time. And I think we need to, we'll be bringing back a, this is the amount of money we have. If we do this, we can get these things done. If we do this, we can get these things done. And then you, of course, in the end, make that ultimate decision. And we'll give you recommendations.
Can I add one more thing that are the Qsaps? To go back to the $13 million, you know, we're just paying those back, if I understand right, on face value, on those, essentially.
Essentially, yeah.
And if you look at, if you look at that, and you say, even by getting that, even at the lowest rate of 2.06, we've saved the community over $13.8 million already by getting that particular.
The interest on the thing.
The interest. Right. I mean, we've saved them that much, I mean.
Right. We analyzed that about $2.6 million, I think it was the original number.
2.?
So what we saved was the interest on the 13 million. So had we paid interest at, the original was 6% that we originally estimated, it's the interest that we saved.
Okay. I was just looking at the multiples. I was looking at.
Well, if you'd had to buy a cab, or if you bought some other instrument, it might have been two or three times.
Well, that's what I was looking at, the other multiple. So it wouldn't be the multiple, their payback?
No, because, see, that, that debt, well.
Okay.
The debt stuck up front, so the payback is quicker.
Okay. Okay.
The bottom line, yeah, the bottom line is the Qs was a very good thing.
Okay.
Are those available still, or?
They are not.
I don't think so.
They might bring them back, but unfortunately, there were so many other districts that didn't get any.
We won't, we won't get it again.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's a one-time.
The way that, the way that it works is, you, I mean, you got to have shovel-ready projects, you got to have all these other things that go on with it, you know, there's more, there's more need in the list. Why, we're, we're really fortunate to get it. And there's a lot of people that didn't get it, and so many times, if you got one, they don't let you go in for the next one. So we'll bring more information back.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a good introduction to where we're going to be on this. Challenging. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Appreciate that. We are on to item number 12, which is Business and Operations. This is approval of the Budget Revision Number 2012-13, Number 6 action item.
Lightning Quick here, number six, the sixth in a series of revisions. We know these are very common. We just, in December, are coming off of the first interim revisions, which were comprehensive. So the two or three weeks of downtime, and as you can see, there, there was not much movement in the budget whatsoever.
Is there anyone who wishes to publicly comment on the budget? Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the Budget Revision 2012-13, Number 6 is presented?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. On to item number 13, Future Agenda Items. Anybody have anything they wish to bring up that they can remember at all?
Whatever's on the board calendar is fine with me.
We stick to that very strictly. At this point, it is item number 14, which is Public Comment on Closed Session Items. Is there anyone present who wishes to publicly comment concerning tonight's closed session agenda? The Board will now adjourn to closed session agenda to discuss only the items on tonight's closed session agenda, and we just have one item tonight, Superintendent Evaluation. And we will reconvene, and we will be done before 10:30.